Okay, thanks everybody. We were just an executive session to discuss contract negotiations and to discuss matters made confidential by client attorney privilege. Okay? And now we're back. So two quick announcements before we get into our budget presentation. One is I understand the girls' basketball team just won their regional semifinals.
Yeah.
And they are headed to the regional finals. We don't know exactly where or when.
It's Old Westbury.
Oh, did you get some information?
I think it's Old Westbury on Thursday.
Old Westbury on Thursday. That's off the record.
Yep.
Might not be right.
Yes, I believe that's where they anticipated it would be.
Okay.
But we can put it on the website for tomorrow.
Great. So congratulations to them. I'm also going to plug the Into the Woods is happening, not this weekend but next. Friday, March 17th through Sunday, March 19th. And that's it. That's all I have to say. And we're going to get right into some budget presentations. I don't know if you have a lead up, Diana?
Well, so the last time we met, we had some information about the non-instructional budget items that were, we were suggesting for our budget for next year. And tonight, we are going to be talking about the instructional part of our budget and the information and the dollar values that are associated with that. So we are going to also be hearing from our administrative group regarding their educational rationale for the things that they are asking for. And so we'll go ahead and start. So this is the agenda that we're going to be working with tonight. We'll first start talking about the teaching, then we'll go into co-curricular and some of the support services that occur with our instructional process. So teaching regular school. This is basically the amount of money that goes into paying the teachers to getting the programs in place for staff development, for field trips, for supplies, for everything that is needed in order to have an educational program for our students. The textbook aid, we also have listed here and the amount per child, which is a little under $80 per student. We also have a, we are the LEA, the Local Education Agency, for another school district within the Haldane School District, and we all help to support them as well, which is Montu. Other things that go into teaching some of our staff development and our staff development monies, which we've been talking quite a bit about over the last couple of years, and we are continuing on with the work that we have been doing. And you've probably heard us talking about going an inch wide and a mile deep, and that we're continuing with in, with this budget. We're talking about expanding teacher growth opportunities. And some of the different agencies that we work with are listed below. For co-teaching experiences, for the learner profiles, for the New Tech Network, and our work we're doing with PBL. We are moving from our second cohort in the training process to next year, the third cohort in the training process. We're also talking about leadership and coaching training for our principals, our administrators, and our teachers that are moving into coaching. And we are now beginning to train our own faculty with our faculty. We're also, sorry.
What does ICT mean?
Integrated Co-Teaching.
Integrated Co-Teaching. Thank you.
Yep. So we're also talking about visitations that will be beginning, that will happen at the end of this year and also for next year. Sorry. Go ahead. Okay, so probably the biggest area of focus will continue to be the work that we're doing with the New Tech Network. We have the New Tech Network that comes here onsite and works with us in our classroom and trains our teachers onsite. We also have NTech, which is the Summer Institute. Last year, it was in Florida. This year, it's in St. Louis. And we offer the opportunity to our teachers to go to NTech to continue to grow and develop. And a lot of time is offered for planning. So you have groups of people that can come together and plan together. And it's a very powerful situation. Last year, we had 18 of our faculty and administrators that went to Florida for a little under a week. And we anticipate similar numbers, probably a few less. In our annual contract with NTech, we have, we've already paid for 12 teachers to attend. And so we'll be starting to organize who will be going. I know a number of our teachers from last year asked if they could go back this year. So, and our coaches will be going as well. So the cost is a little over $70,000, $70,560 annually for the contract and what goes within the contract. And this is something that's been amortized over a five-year period. If we didn't amortize, it would have been cost-heavy in the beginning and cost-light later on. But this is a way that we can determine how much it's going to cost for us on an annual basis.
Dr. Bowers.
Yes.
So the St. Louis trip is in addition to $70,560 or just the travel expenses in addition?
The, just the travel expenses is additional. But we, and with that, with the contract, the annual contract, we can send 12 people. And so that, we've already paid for that. The second is the creation of our learner profiles. And as you start looking at our strategic plan, we are actually going to be entering, and that was very quick, our third year of our strategic plan. And we've done a lot to already integrate and implement some of the ideas that were really forefront within the plan, one of which is the creation of our learner profiles. We are putting the finishing touches on a newsletter that is about to go out and really explain what we've done throughout the district. We have our students in grade four, seven, and nine that took part in the strategic plan, sorry, from the strategic plan took part in the learner profiles. And we had, at our last meeting, we had our students that came and shared their experiences as participants in the learner profile. So you'll learn a little bit more about that. Last year, we had, we worked with the Yellen Center to help develop the first tier, which is pretty much finished for this year. And then next year, we'll start looking at what the learner profiles will look like for kids that are either in RTI, Response to Intervention, and Support Services through RTI, or through our Special Education Department. And as the needs of the child get greater, we will have more intensive profiles that will really help us hone in on the needs of the students within RTI and Special Education. So last year, we budgeted for $15,000 for the work that we're doing. Next year, we're also going to budget a similar amount, and Dr. Yellen will be spending time with us helping us create that for next year. Okay. We're also looking at a few other opportunities to bring back, and I'll ask Brent to come up at this point, because Brent will be talking about kind of rekindling something we had at one time before with our kindergarten, pre-kindergarten transition program. We're also looking at the potential for supporting our rising first and second graders that may need additional support so they can be on-grade level readers by the time they exit third grade.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Bowers. So, yes, certainly, we are, I think, well aware of the importance of early intervention. And we feel very strongly that having an opportunity to have a kindergarten transition program for three weeks in the summer would be incredibly advantageous in terms of really identifying and supporting those students who we have identified through our screening process and through our pre-K observations, that are children that are likely at risk, to really provide them with the support they need to transition to kindergarten. So that is something that I'm proposing in this year's budget. And then also additionally, bringing back our summer school program. We're well aware of the nature of regression, particularly as it relates to those students who are at risk, who have been receiving targeted remediation over the course of the school year, and really the need to continue to provide that intensive remediation over the summer. So we would like to offer that summer school program a little bit differently than we had in years past, where it was typically offered in the month of July. But then inevitably, we would see some regression again in August. We are proposing to have a summer program for three weeks for our at-risk incoming kindergarten students through those students potentially moving into third grade during the first weeks of August, the first three weeks of August.
So, Danielle, would you go to the next slide so Mr. Harrington can talk about the enrollment for kindergarten coming up?
Well, there you have it on the slide. We have 39 confirmed potential incoming kindergarten students. Ms. Critara and Ms. Lamont will begin their visits to our local pre-K programs beginning next week. That will take us through the month of March before we begin our formal screening process. We are watching the numbers closely. I've been communicating regularly with Dr. Bowers as well as Ms. Daly. And right now, we are, we are at 39. So it appears as if, you know, our numbers have kind of remained consistent to what they've been this year with our kindergarten class.
And Brent, could you talk a little bit, maybe if there's a different time to talk about it, that's also fine. But this current year, we have two sections of kindergarten. And you're anticipating bringing that into three sections of first grade like we have this year. Can you talk a little bit about those numbers and how you anticipate them?
Sure. So we found this past summer, we had nine new registrants from the end of last school year, when school closed June 23rd, until school reopened September 1st. I think there's a number of reasons for that. There are a number of students who are electing to come to us in first grade that are remaining in their programs, in the particular, a few particular pre-K programs in the area for kindergarten. So I do anticipate, I am aware of at least four that will likely be transitioning to Haldane for first grade. That being said, we're also finding a number of families that are electing to move to Cold Spring by the time their child is in first grade. So we had a number of new families that came to us, having moved from New York City, having had their child in kindergarten in New York City. So based on last year's experience, based on what I'm already aware of in terms of at least an increased enrollment of four, I think it's highly likely that we'll see an enrollment that really justifies a third section moving into first grade.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Do you want to go back to that enrichment program?
Yeah. Excuse me?
Do you want to go back to enrichment or no?
Oh, yes. This will be, we'll talk about the enrichment, and then Julie will also talk about the middle school debate club.
So back up to the slide on enrichment and some of the programming at the elementary and middle school level. Over the past few years, we've had many generous grants and different donations, and things have shifted a little bit in terms of some of the programs that we're used to running in terms of the funding. We'd like to continue a lot of that programming. For example, Hudson Highlands Land Trust has lost a tremendous amount of funding through their programming. Believe it or not, they push into our classrooms, I think we counted, over 50 times over the course of a year, K8. And with them losing their funding, we could lose the programming. So what we'd like to do is budget to keep the work that Hudson Highlands Land Trust does in our classrooms. Kathy Curdo pushes into the classrooms, does a great job with writing with our children. Pete Samuelson does a great job with the outdoor education stuff in our classrooms. So again, we're talking over 30 programs that they offer to us. So we'd like to include that in the budget moving forward for next year. Another piece is the creative writing course that we'd like to bring back in the middle school for our seventh and eighth grade students as well. So just some enrichment opportunities that we don't want to see go away.
Going ahead, we do have teacher retirement and a couple of support services retirements, which will be included in the budget this year as we hire new teachers that are coming in or new teaching assistants at a lesser cost to the district. We also will miss our very talented people that we're about to leave. As we go into co-curriculars, there are two new clubs that started this year without cost to the district, and this is their trial year, and they're moving, we hope to move them into clubs that are within the contract next year. It's both the Middle School Debate Club and the History Club. Would you like to talk a little bit about the debate club?
Again, this was the first year of the debate club. It's in its infancy. We did bring nine middle school students to Bard College for their first debate. We ended up placing fourth, oh, I'm sorry, we had one team that placed fourth. There were nine different schools there, but each school could submit multiple teams. So we went up with three teams. One of our teams came in fourth, which was great for us, the first time debate. A lot of these schools, it's not just a debate club, it's a debate class. So they really focus in on it every other day. And the school day, where our kids worked on it, actually only for about three weeks after school during 10th period, to really formulate this debate club. We also ended up with the first-place finisher at the Bard College debate. Sophia Kotman came in best debater out of all the schools up there, which is huge. And then we had three other students finish in the top 10, which again, was great for us. So they did a great job in their infancy year, and we'd really like to formalize the program and be able to have a staff member oversee it.
Thank you. And Peter, you want to join us for the History Club, and then you can move into the seminar, ninth grade seminar for next year.
Good evening, everybody. It's great to see you guys again. So our History Club has actually been meeting for about a year and a half, if not longer. And they've been doing so many amazing things, even in the community, as well as bringing in presenters from the museum right here, and reaching out to even the local cemeteries and some of the local history and celebrating what that is, in addition to celebrating the history of Haldane. And so we're very hopeful that, through all their good efforts, that they can continue in that pathway.
Can I just interrupt you? Could you just remind us of that process? So when there's a new club brewing of interest, there's a trial year, and then what is, what needs to be met during that trial year?
Well, the advisors do it gratis, run the clubs gratis. And the students, they kind of create their rules, regulations, their charge, all the things that go through with the clubs. And then if it's successful and they want to continue it, and the advisor feels that it should move forward, then we put it in the budget for the following year. And if the budget is approved, then we have a club, a new club that has come. And we have, each year, we've had one or two clubs.
Right. And is there an enrollment requirement or participation requirement?
It has to be, I don't know if there is a specific requirement.
Maybe it depends on the club.
But there has to be enough that what they're trying to do or why they exist is actually comes to fruition.
Okay.
So I think it would be different depending on what the club is.
Each club. Okay.
So were these the only two that are in the second year now that are coming through? Or are there more? Because there were a couple new, other new ones last year, right?
Well, we already had some last year that are now already in the contract, and they have.
More Women Empowered?
Women Empowered.
Those are both now permanent clubs that have made it in. And these are two new ones that have come this year that, in their, in their first year and next year will be their second year.
Got it.
And both are doing very well. Okay, and if you'd just stay for a moment. Some of the things that we're going to be talking about are, and as we go through, we're continuing to expand the offerings that we have. And the focus, again, going back to the strategic plan, is really the development of the 21st century skills that our students will need to have a skill set in when they graduate. And this includes all of the components within the strategic plan. And as we move on through project-based learning and our learner profiles, we're also creating new courses that will help supplement them. And so the ninth, we are introducing the ninth grade seminar.
So yes, thank you, Dr. Bowers. It's, it's an awesome opportunity to continue to expand and support our teachers as they're diving into that kind of project-based learning, experiential learning. So we'd like to see that continue, and we'd also like to dive deeper into the learner profile work. To that end, proposing a ninth grade seminar, freshman seminar, in which all ninth graders would be able to create on their own and dive into their own learner profile survey. It'll also give a chance for students to get some organizational support, some career and college pathway use, yet the primary focus would be to develop that individualized learner profile. And so we're hopeful to be able to offer that to every freshman incoming for next year as an additional course.
So, I'm sorry. This is in addition to what's already being done this year with the ninth grade?
Right. And what we had is, we have a small number of weeks of instruction, and now we're expanding it. And so I think that ultimately, we'll want a semester of the work that's associated with the learner profile. Some of the emotional intelligence work will continue, the brain-based learning will continue, and our students will learn about themselves and the teenage brain. So, and then there's some additional components that you're thinking of including in the seminar?
Yeah.
Besides the profile work?
Yep. Yep. And that way, also, it's, it's a full-on freshman seminar in terms of diving into high school, what does college and career look like, at the same time, allowing kids to really experience what it is for them. So having visa, visa pathway program, things like that, more present for them. The way we would suggest rolling it out would be through a singular period in the day with kind of every-other-day slots, so that we're able to get all the kids in there and give it honestly, a real chance to dive into how they learn, and so they can actually create those profiles and pathways for themselves. Kind of along the lines of what I was saying last week about the individualized approach, so they can individualize their learning.
Okay. Library media. We are continuing to look for a librarian that will be the right match for Haldane, and we've had some new librarians come in and some that we like very much that unfortunately left, and we've kind of been back and forth. We have not yet found our match, so we're continuing with that. And I think, Julie, you're the lead person in that?
Yes, the closing or the posting. The posting closed last Friday, so we will begin the process of interviewing again for that. So we're very hopeful.
Okay, and we continue on with our computer-assisted instruction at the different levels. And Leah?
That's not funny. Thank you. I need my own. You can walk up with it. Hi, everybody.
Can I actually take it off of that?
Oh, I forgot. I can walk around the room and really entertain. I won't do that. Okay, so we are, in order to support the project-based learning and all the awesome things that are going on in the classroom, we need to make sure that the devices are in the students' hands. So for sure, we're going to continue the one-to-one that's happening at the high school. We want to increase the one-to-one to the grades three, seven, and nines, that those students have more access to their own devices. We definitely need to work on the infrastructure, so we're going to continue on making sure that our infrastructure is capable of supporting those extra devices and.
Can I just add one thought before you really go into infrastructure? Going three, seven, and nine, those grades are the ones that are in the planning year with New Tech Network this year. So once they spend the year in the planning year and they move into the implementation year, that's the point where we start pushing the Chromebooks in to allow them to do what is necessary for that. So I just wanted to clarify. Sorry.
So we will definitely continue to support and update the infrastructure. There's a lot of pieces to it that need to be, you know, changed out. Unfortunately, technology, as we all know, it doesn't last more than five or six years, depending on the devices. So support, improve the infrastructure whenever possible, definitely the Wi-Fi, because as we add more devices, we're going to need better Wi-Fi support. So we'll continue to do that. The desktops that we have, a lot of the teachers still have their own desktops in the classroom. They still need to be replaced on a, you know, like a five-year basis, so we're going to still continue to do that. We are going to continue with Edutac. They come once a week to support our infrastructure and be the, kind of the network engineers, the real brains of the network piece. So they will continue with us once a week to support us. And definitely want to continue with the technology support. So this year, we added two individuals that are supporting Edutac and myself, and it's been tremendously successful, being able to have three bodies in the district that can run and do quick fixes and sort of emergency stuff when the teachers are in the midst of, you know, a technology thing that's not working, or at least be able to fix things more quickly. So that's the plan.
So could you also just, while you're here, give us an update on where we are with the Smart Schools money?
Sure. So we are still in the, what do they call it, the review phase. We're still just waiting for our technology plan to get approved. So hopefully, we're hoping in the next round, we will get approved. We had some, a couple of things are really specific about the documents. So the couple of things got kicked back, silly things like, we changed our internet. We used to be BOCS, we're now LightPath. The old document, which was appropriate at the time, said we had BOCS and didn't say LightPath. So they kicked it back because we didn't update it to LightPath. Couple bumps in the road with some silly stuff. They've had it at the moment, I think, you know, for a couple of months now, so we're all hoping that it'll get approved soon.
And we're hearing that we are one of many districts that still have not received any funding. And so as we go into now being two years in the planning stage, we're waiting for the funding to come so we can help with our infrastructure and upgrade it more quickly than we would be able to in the budget.
I just have a quick question about the one-to-ones at the high school. Are we still planning on pushing Chromebooks or keeping the iPads? Are we getting rid of sort of thing?
We're going to keep, keep the iPads right now. They're juniors and seniors. They're going to graduate and become, you know, move up here, become seniors. And then we'll keep pulling in the Chromebooks. The kids have seemed to be really enjoying the Chromebooks, and they seem to be a little bit easier for them to do their work on. They're cheaper. The Chromebook is a lot cheaper than an iPad. They're a lot easier to replace the screen. iPad screen, when it breaks, we have to ship it out. I tried replacing one by myself. Don't do that. But it's like $100 to replace an iPad screen. Chromebook screen, we can do it here in-house, and it costs us $35 plus shipping, something like that, to do the screen. So I think the Chromebooks are really the way to go. We're a Google school too, so it makes sense.
But we're not going one way or the other. There's, they're going to have access to both for the foreseeable future.
Sure. So as we, it's been a while, but when I was up here last time, we discussed that the kids will be one-to-one Chromebooks, but also have access to iPads and carts, because nothing will ever replace the iPad in terms of its ability to do video and some of the apps and things like that. So yeah, they will definitely have access to iPad carts.
But we can never say never. Next year, Chromebooks will have.
Yeah. We'll be just as mobile.
And Leah, correct me if I'm wrong, but the Edutac shift to just one day a week, that was new this past year, right?
Last year was the first year we did that.
Right. And so that, you're suggesting that we continue with that. So that's working?
It's working. It's, the, Edutac likes to say that our, we are their toughest day of the week, Haldane is, because other schools have more, a little bit more support. So when Edutac comes here on Tuesday, his day is jam-packed with assignments from myself or, you know, things that I couldn't fix for whatever reason. I think as we add devices and as, you know, this infrastructure, when we replace all these, there's a lot of stuff happening, hopefully with Smart School being approved, new servers, new switches, and there's a lot of support that goes on with that. So next year, I say, you know, keep what we're doing, but I don't know what next, after next year, it will look like. It may become to the point where we just have so many devices, we need them to come more often. He's packed. He shows up at 8:30 in the morning, and he, the poor guy barely has time for lunch. And that's with three of us on campus doing as much as we can to fix and support. So, but it's working. So, you know, some of the times, a teacher has to wait maybe a week if it's an emergency. I think the library had a computer down, and it was kind of a big inconvenience, but we couldn't fix it without him. So they had to wait a week till he came. So it's a little frustrating, but it's working.
What? Sorry? Okay.
So he can remote in, so our servers, for instance, they have an awesome setup for our servers. If we have a server down, everybody knows it, we can all get text messages right away, and they fix it. It's amazing. Sometimes we have like electrical things that happen, and I'm at home, it's 5:30 in the morning, I get a text message, server's down. Before I even have time to panic and think about, oh, God, who are we going to call? Everybody's coming in, servers are down, they remote it and fix it. So they do a lot of that type of work, remoting in. But some of the things that I'm talking about, they got to be onsite to do, you know, like, there's a lot of stuff that I didn't really understand too, like keeping the server up to date. They have to sit, you know, Rick could use a whole day where I lock him in a room and don't let anybody talk to him, and he just focuses on the server and keeping stuff up to date and maintenance and things like that. And that stuff, he kind of has to be on campus to do.
What is the cost, have we ever thought of the cost of just getting a full-time tech person as opposed to the service?
It's, it would be a lot more expensive because you're talking about a salary. I mean, that's my dream to me, someone who can live here full-time, be our network engineer, and really have ownership over this infrastructure and our school, right? That's the, that's the best employee. But you got to add, you need a decent salary if you're not even going to hire them, and then health insurance and things like that.
What do we budget? What is the budget specifically?
Edutac is $35,000 a year for one day a week.
$35,000 for one day a week?
And then there are a couple of days that we would, we include, we ask them to come in beyond that. But it was over 60 for two days. And, you know, and we're. And then we, there are a couple of days that we would, we include, we ask them to come in beyond that, but it was over sixty for two days, and, you know, and we are also in need of, what, what's the number, they have like one, two, or three, tier one, two, or three?
Right, so we are budgeted, right now, that thirty-four thousand is the lowest level of network engineer. We are lucky to have Rick right now, who's the highest level, he's awesome, he's a, he's a great guy, but we, we don't even pay for that, we don't pay for what we're getting right now, we're getting more than, than what we actually pay for.
And we have two additional staff members that go around fixing printers, and, so what's the cost?
Again, I don't know, I mean, there's nothing, I mean, I'm, I don't, you know, I'm sure, I know he's great, but, I mean, technically, it would be, it would be cheaper to get a person, because you only, it's thirty-five thousand dollars for one day, and you could probably get a full-time tech person for, I don't know, anywhere between fifty and seventy-five.
Right, five days a week, yeah, eight hours a day.
So, you know, I mean, if you, if you think of it like that, it's way much cheaper, plus, and then you wouldn't need two other teachers, or probably, or getting compensated somehow.
They get the equivalent of a six-period assignment, so it's like six thousand dollars a year, so you would add that up.
Right, so, I mean, I don't know, it might be something to entertain.
I think we'll have entertained it.
Yeah, we have had this conversation.
But it sounds like, like financially, it, it makes sense, like you, between the two six periods and the thirty-five thousand dollars, and you're only getting them for two days, I mean, for one day.
One day, yeah.
I mean, it, it's, for an extra ten or fifteen thousand, you can get them five days a week.
I don't think we're going to get an IT person for that.
Yeah.
Well, you'd be surprised.
The other piece is...
I mean, again, I don't know his expertise, this guy might be, you know, the same expertise, I'm just saying, just a thought, maybe not for this year, but for, for next year.
Well, as our needs increase, if we are thinking about adding another day for Edutec, then we're, then we're definitely talking about...
A salary.
A salaried position, I think.
The other piece, just the advantage of Edutec, is they do all the training for their staff, so anything, those, their staff members are responsible to have the latest and greatest certification and training, so we will always have support that is state-of-the-art in terms of that.
And they also help train you.
Oh, a lot, I mean, the, I'd probably drive him crazy, but yeah, he's taught me a lot. Not that I want to be a network engineer. Okay?
Thanks, Leah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Tony, special services.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Special services tend to fluctuate year to year, based on the articulation of our students and the needs that come in and come out of, and leave the district, as that relates to one-to-one aids, teacher assistance, tuition, and other expenses, and transportation. The budget is sort of determined by the projections that we do every year, and I reported on that in my last board report, and that I sat down with the principals and many of the teachers to discuss, what are the projected needs of the students for the coming years, so we can anticipate a lot of those and budget accordingly. However, there are always unexpected expenses as those student needs do develop, and we're obviously bound to address those by federal and state law, so those can come mid-year, late in year, and, and those are addressed as needed. The academy, completing its pilot year this year, next year, it's coming to a crossroads where it could become one of two things, either a project-based learning program back at, at Haldane on campus, or potentially to remain at St. Basil's as a BOCs program. And Dr. Bowers and myself have presentations to our colleagues coming up in the near future to assess, or to build and assess interest in those areas. And I think that's it for me. Pretty cut and dry.
Just the occupational education?
Oh, sure.
We should talk about the upgrade this year, and we're going to continue to look at one full-time equivalent for next year.
That's right.
So we went from a point seven to a point eight, and then to a full-time equivalent with our occupational therapy.
And that, that, that need has risen, as, as I said before, we try to anticipate those needs, and sometimes we have to react to it mid-year, and that increase from seven to eight to a full-time position was one that we addressed this year, and actually, Dr. Bowers and I just had a conversation with Dr. Nyman, who led our program review of special ed yesterday. He was looking at our staffing ratio as compared to like districts by socioeconomic status, and we do pretty well, we're pretty much on par, and we actually have somewhat ideal staffing ratios in a lot of areas, but with OT, we're right on point.
So I think we're going to have a presentation regarding our special ed audit at the, in the April workshop meeting, and so they, they met with us, now they go back and complete their report, we'll get a copy of it, and then we'll come and present in April, so, and they'll give suggestions. So we do have a little bit of a people personnel guidance, anything you want to, and the social worker, just talk about the staffing.
Sure. The psychologists, school counselors, social workers fall under the people personnel services, special services umbrella. They chair annual reviews, and they do our psychoeducational evaluations for CSE meetings, and they also provide building level and mandated services in the schools.
So we continue to have two guidance counselors. Last year, we added a point five psychologist, and now we have one point five psychologist full-time equivalents in the district, and we have our social workers, a couple of social works in the district.
There's one in the high school and one in the elementary school, is that right?
Mm-hmm. And Tara Rounds is spending half of her day, or point five FTEs, at the middle school, so we have support for the middle school through our psychologist as well.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
The health, thank you. The health services, as you know, we have a new nurse that started with us this year, and that, that's continuing well. We have, there will be some, a little bit of a changeover in the staffing for the, the support services next year within the nurse's office. And I am the athletic director tonight, since Chris is at the game.
The girls won.
Yep, so the girls won. So basically, we're, we're continuing to support what we presently have as teams within the district. We will ask that we continue to have that ten thousand dollars if we need extra coaches or additional supports within the athletic department. We are also talking, and we probably will talk more about this, I might as well let you know, since we will be having some conversations. We are, we are also in discussion with Hen Hud about the amount of support that they're going to be asking us to financially give to them as we merge into a hockey team, and it's beginning to sound a lot more expensive than we may be able to handle. So we'll have, right now, we have five students that are playing hockey, next year it will be four, so that's going to be a conversation. And although that money will be in the budget, we're going to have to talk about whether we're better suited spending a large sum of money for four players at hockey, or if we want to bring it into our athletic department. So we're not quite ready to, to share all of it, but it is a discussion that Chris and I have been having. We, so we have our contingent coaches, we have our, our new athletic trainer, athletic, what if, I'm saying the wrong thing? Athletic trainer, okay. We have our new athletic trainer that has joined us this year, and she's done a great job. She may be spending more time in the district next year, and we, we are discussing potentially offering her an afternoon position in the nurse's office as our, as we change the staffing there. So she would then be going from a part-time to a full-time employee, if that's the case, so we're hoping to support her and keep her in the district.
And right now, she's on like an independent contractor status.
Correct.
Correct, so that would shift to be more of an employee.
Well, she would still be, as an athletic trainer, she would be an independent contractor, but then she would be under the CSEA contract as a support for the, the nurse's office, but together, it would be a full-time equivalent.
But we're definitely planning on keeping her next year.
We have her in the budget.
And if, if the school, if this, in the nurse's office adds to a full-time, we're not talking health insurance though, because that part is...
Yes, we are, full-time.
So it doesn't become independent contractor?
Well, she would still, part of her contract would be, because there's just one, and it's not under either the CSEA or the teacher's contract, she has her own individualized contract for the athletic trainer piece, but when we combine it, she would then be moving also into the CSEA. And so the insurance for somebody who is in a full-time position through the CSEA, that would be something that she would be eligible for.
Okay. Could we, so we, is it because she wouldn't have enough hours in the athletic training realm, that we wouldn't, that wouldn't be?
She's not full-time.
Okay.
Yeah, and, you know, I, we know that she's somebody we'd like to keep, and we'd like to continue our relationship with her, and so...
Absolutely, I've heard nothing but positive feedback, so...
Mm-hmm. So how that will look, how exactly that will look next year, we haven't determined, but we know that there will be some additional time, and we thought she would be a great oper, you know, great opportunity, or a great person to have in the nurse's office because of her medical background, so that would work. Okay, so, moving on, a couple of things, did you have some?
The equipment and the uniforms.
Oh, the equipment and the uniforms, I think that's pretty much consistent with what it's been in the past, where there, there were some minimal increases within that.
Right, but it's an increase in, in those allocations, because those are, we're definitely in need in the area to, to spend some more funds that weren't available. I mean, over the past few years, the athletic budget has really, you know, when we needed to cut back, the funds were really nibbled into, it was like, where can we trim? And it's really beyond the bare bone in, in there, and it's showing as far as for wear and tear on uniforms and equipment, so you'll see an increased allocation in that area.
Okay, and as we have done in the past, we will continue to look at all schedules and the opportunities that our teachers have, and really kind of refine things to maximize our efficiency and our costs, and that could be anywhere from within the, the teacher's schedules to transportation study, which we've been talking about, to our special ed study, which we're going to learn more about this year, and any other areas that we think that we can hone in on and be maximum efficiency where we are. We are currently beginning, or we're in the discussions to begin, the HFA contract, and we're going to negotiate that through, and hopefully have it in, complete before the end of June, and then we'll be moving into a new contract next year. And we will be talking more at length and in detail about future capital projects and referendum, referenda that we, we are considering in the future. So that's also something you'll hear more about. So, the budget, as, this is the total budget and the expenditures, you see last year's, this year's, the increase for the budget, five hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and sixteen, budget-to-budget increase of two-point-three, tax levy increase of two-point-two-three, and a tax rate increase of two-point-two-five, and this is below the tax cap, and we have our cap, our tax cap ratio has allowed us to go slightly above two percent because of additional expenditures that are available to the district through the tax levy calculation. So Andy, want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure, this proposal number one encompasses all of the things that were just presented to you tonight. It is higher than the rollover budget, but there are enhancements to the budget. The retirement has been taken into consideration, and any known contract increases. So the, the next slide, I know that Dr. Bowers will want to also elaborate a bit more, but...
But I'd also like to say, before we go to the next slide, oh, I see it's on there, that the kindergarten, right now, we do have three kindergarten positions in the budget. So we, we do have a deficit at this point, and with staying under the tax cap and keeping the tax cap where we're allowed to go, just staying directly under, we will have a, a gap of a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars with everything that has been requested in the budget. But we do have a couple of things that are still question marks. We do have three teachers in, for kindergarten in the budget, and right now, with, with thirty-nine students, we would probably only have two sections, so that's something we have to consider. Have, we, we don't know, we are still waiting to hear from Garrison to know how many of the students will be coming here next year, and so we've, we're almost at the point that we'll be finding out, but we just haven't found out yet. We also will be looking at special ed placements, what's going to happen with the academy, all of those things would be potentials, and then whether or not there would be any additional state aid. So we had the first run of the state support come to us, and the first state run, and we haven't had anything additional, we don't know if there's going to be anything additional, we haven't heard anything about it, but there's still a possibility, and until they, they have their budget in place, there's always a possibility that, that a little more funding will come to us.
We have talked about a pretty significant increase in health insurance through the consortium, does this, it accounts for?
Yeah, which was about eight percent this year, and we've had, we've been enjoying very low percent increases over the last couple of years, but this is a much more substantial hit.
And for the Garrison tuition, like, do you have in your mind a number, where you based it on a number, so when we get the final number, you'll be able to say it's more, more or less, so...
Right.
Right, we, we know how many are graduating, so we just are waiting for the number of how many are coming to know if our revenue will go up or stay the same. The, the increase in tuition was minimal, because it's based on a budget-to-budget increase, and the, this year's budget increase was not substantial enough to really make a difference in the revenue line, so that's really what we're waiting for, so that we can adjust the revenue lines appropriately.
But in your projections, you use the number of the graduation class.
Correct.
Right, so that's the number that's currently in there.
Which is six? Garrison students that are graduating, it's small, it's a small group.
It's a small, it's a small amount, so we're pretty confident that we'll get that.
So, okay, so, so any number over six will be, oh, we got more money?
Right, and it'll help bridge the gap.
Oh, okay.
So, we also would like to support all the wonderful people that help support us, and there's a couple of them in the room right now, so thank you to the foundation, and PTA, and Blue Devil Booster Club, and the Art Booster Club, and, well, I guess we can say thank you to E-Rate, it doesn't have the, the same kind of oomph to it, PTA, but, you know, this is, we're, it's a team effort for all the right reasons, so we're very glad.
Okay, well, I think we asked questions along the way, but if the board has any more questions, that was a good time.
I just have one comment, I just really was very, very excited, I want to commend Mr. Harrington and Ms. Sniffin for bringing back summer school. I think that's really great, that was something that went away a while ago, and I think it's way overdue to come back, so, you know, kudos to you guys for, kudos to you guys for, for really thinking about that and, and bringing that back.
And I have a related question, how did you, and if it's, if this is better for just like a conversation, like, I'm curious, like, how you came up with a three-week number, like, that's...
It's really elementary.
Oh, yeah, I, sorry, I was looking at you, but I should have been looking at Brent. And actually, well, then also, then my question for you, Julia, is the middle school enrichment, that's all within school, that's all the school day enrichment, that's not like after-school enrichment, right?
The enrichment in the middle school that are clubs are just kind of like the high school model, where it's during tenth period.
Right.
So technically, the day...
But I was thinking, the Hudson Highland Land Trust, that's all, that's all academic.
That's curricular work, academic during the day, it's just enrichment activities in the classroom.
Thank you.
Ellen, can you turn the lights real quick?
Oh, yeah, I got it. In terms of the three weeks, really to limit as much regression as possible, so when we had the conversations in regards to bringing summer school back, we really first started with recognizing that it's, it's in those students' best interest to have a later summer school program, as opposed to the one that we had in July, and also recognizing that when we did have the program in July, it was three weeks, it was four days over the course of, of three weeks, so the, the model is, is really the same just later in the, in the summer.
Great, thanks. Are there any questions from the public regarding the budget? Okay, I think we're ready to move on from the budget, anything else, are we good? So if anyone wants to sneak away, we won't be offended.
Thank you.
Because we're going to go into talking about some goals, this is kind of like a mid-year chat-through for us. For anyone following along... For anyone following along at home, if you go on our website, and I actually think it's better to look at the superintendent's goals because her goals are also directly related to our goals and they're all right there on the same page for you. So, there are board goals and then there's the superintendent goals right away following. So this is a chance for us to just check in with ourselves, basically, see how we're doing. So, maybe I'll just start with the first one and we can just give some comments. And then, Dr. Bowers, you can also kind of comment in about that goal, so we're all on the same goal.
Right.
So the first goal is to support the effective implementation of the strategic plan. So who wants to start?
Wait, where are you on the, on the website?
If you go to superintendent.
I actually have hard copies if you'd like them.
So, let's see, go to a home, go to school, you got, okay. So, Margaret, would you like to start? Sharing any thoughts about board goal number one? Evan, would you like to start?
Sure. Well, I mean, I think, you know, it's all about, you know, these are really instructional movements in the, in the district. And obviously, we rely on the superintendent and the administrators and the teachers to do that. And, you know, I think, I think we've, we've done that, we've given them the support they need as far as allowing them to go on conferences, allowing them to bring in outside consultants. The Haldane Academy, you know, has, has been relatively successful, it appears, as we moved to the second year. So, I, I think it's, it's been, been really good. And as far as the technology, you know, you heard what Leah said about, you know, with the Chromebooks and the one, and the one-to-one. And it's now, it's across all three schools. So, I think there's a lot of great movement in that. So, I, I think, I think we're really moving forward on that plan.
And I think in terms of the Haldane Academy, I mean, that's been a tough one for us because it has been shifting quite a bit. You know, there's been a lot of information coming in and going out along the way. I think we have remained supportive of it, which is what we said we would do, and give you guys the, you know, the brass that you need to figure it out because it's a new program. But I do think it would be great, and maybe this is something you'll talk about too, Diana, and we've, we've talked about it a bit as a board, but I do think it would be great as we're now in budget mode. You know, we've kind of talked about getting a little bit of concreteness to it. Like, are we, how much money are we really spending and how much money are we really saving? And then, up until now, I think the answer's been like, eh, we're not sure yet, you know, it's kind of in flux. But as we kind of round the corner on this year, I think that that aspect is one of the things for me that's kind of a little bit of a missing piece. Like, I'd love to know just a little more concretely how it's working out financially for us.
And we will put that together, and we are in the black. How far we're in the black, I don't know, but we are definitely in the black. And part of that is because the work that we've done with the Haldane Academy, we barter for our, there's no rent, there's no overhead costs. And because we've been able to do that, it's, we are, the money that we're using to pay for this staff comes from the money that has been saved in outside programs. And so, we will, at the end of the year, there's been a lot of moving pieces as well.
Yeah.
And so, we, we've had, we've had students we've brought back. We actually have one that's been placed out and another that may go out. But we've also had other students that have come back in. And, you know, we've had students that were not in school that have returned to school because the academy exists. And, you know, regardless of what, anything else that happened there, I think that's a win, no matter how you look at it. And so, yeah, and you'll get that, as we get closer, probably early June, we'll be able to give you that number once we see, you know, what's in and out, who's where and how things are going.
Can I add something? So, and this is just a, this is just a thought for long-term future strategic plan for us, long-term goals for you. I think now that we are a blue ribbon high school, I think we have more kids that are ending up in higher-end schools with higher, you know, applying, reaching for the stars, getting to places where we never thought they'd go. I don't think, I think we need to support them. I think we need to start setting things into motion for those kids that are here and ready to go here, but they don't have all of the information that they might need for extracurriculars to put onto their, onto their resumes, for extra activities that they might want to do. I know Mr. Alm used to say there was a binder in the high school that had all those kinds of things in it. I've never seen it, I've never known anyone who saw, who's ever seen it. But Mr. Alm said it was there, so I believe it's got to be there somewhere. But all of those extra kind of opportunities, the splash opportunities at different colleges, the STEM opportunities that they have at Columbia, all those extra things, if we can start getting those things out and, and sending that information to those kids and those kids' parents, I really think the, the whole blue ribbon school and reaching for the stars, I think we've got a lot more kids that can get there. And that's good for all of us.
He said there's a binder.
And I think the binder would change every year, so.
Not really, I mean, it could have the splash stuff in there, it could have, I mean, it could have, people are always asking me, what, you know, how did your kids find out about this and, you know, I don't know, I don't know how we found out, we just knew.
So you're talking about resume building as our students apply to colleges.
Yes, 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 extracurriculars that would be good stuff for them to experience and be able to put on their resumes, to kick them over the edge.
I know a lot of districts are either thinking about or having conversations, which we are too, about actually having digital resumes and having students start building it as soon as they walk into ninth grade.
We have them, isn't that on now, do you want to?
No, but I'm talking about ones that they will actually, more extensive than what we have. We do have some of that, but we're talking about almost a presentation of who they are. And that would include all of that.
We did that at one point, when my kids were little, they had, they had started implementing video applications because that was going to be the wave of the future to apply for college. And these kids had put together video, but obviously didn't become the wave of the future, so somewhere along the line it was dropped, but.
Well, I think it's starting to wave. So, I think that people are talking about it, and there are a lot of, a lot of districts are creating these dossiers to send along with, with their information. So, and, and there's more, they could, it has a more personal touch to it. So, that may be something we're going to be talking about. I do say, if we're looking at doing something like that, we probably have to look at our guidance ratio and what types of things that, what, what types of personnel we would need in order to be able to make that happen.
So, since this is the goal about the strategic plan, I don't want to come off as disagreeing with Margaret, but I, I also, in terms of the strategic plan, I actually also don't want to see Haldane become a place where the sign of, of success is, is getting into an Ivy League school. I think, and I don't think that's what you're saying, I mean, I want kids to go to the best school they want. I'll be honest, I'm more interested in focusing on the kids at the median and below the median and making sure those kids understand what their potential is, right? I think that's actually where, as a society, we under-function is kids who, who may be under-reaching. I feel like there's almost like an epidemic of stress in high school students with the idea of doing all of these things and, and having all these extracurriculars. And what I really remember from the strategic plan is really wanting to make sure that our kids come out of Haldane really, really well, really well-rounded. And I know that, that you're, that you're not, that you're not disagreeing with that, but, I mean, it was something that Brian said that I always took really seriously, that as we become, in some ways, a more affluent community and as we become a higher achieving school, we really want to make sure that, that, that our kids stay really grounded and that applying to college is, is not this thing that really takes over their high school, over their high school, over their high school career. I mean, because I don't.
I think the idea is that, or at least what, how I understood it, is that we want to support all students.
Absolutely, yeah.
And I feel like some of the, sometimes the higher-end students are not as supported as, as other students.
Well, you know, that's something that I remember when talking to the learning differences committee. And I've always thought, you know, going into a learning differences meeting, I just was thinking in my head about lower functioning students. And it was pointed out very quickly to me that learning differences can also mean the super-high achieving kids, right? It's anybody who learns differently than the middle ground. And I think that is something to remember, that it, it is about getting to both ends of those spectrums.
And the middle.
But at the same time, something that we talked about last week, right, at the, when we were talking about those high school, the high school kids, is that we're missing that middle class. It's the same in our country, right? It's like, you're missing like the people in the middle, that there's less of them right now applying to colleges, right? That's what the college professor was telling us. And that's kind of interesting too. So, I mean, I think it's just, it's to say, treat them all, get, get to all of them. And are we, and are we getting to the highest achievers? Let's make sure that we're, we're getting to them as well as the middle, as well as the.
And Peter keeps talking about individualized attention and planning and, and we have to do it. And not just focus on, you know, individual groups or segments, however you want to call it.
Right.
Be supportive of everyone.
And that ninth-grade profile class, I can see that being very beneficial in a lot of different ways. And I'm not sure, we know that the prof, the learner profiles will be part of that, which will be very individualized and really give kids a whole new perspective of who they are and what they're entering into as far as their brain and teenage brain and decision-making and all the things, the amygdala and all the things that are going to happen to them as they move through the early twenties. But there's other room, there are other things that we could put in there and that more individualized, I can see that being a key component. And we haven't fleshed it out yet, but I know that that's something that we should be looking at.
Well, the learner profiles, it looks like it's the perfect place to start. And I think, I think we're doing that. I mean, we're doing that exactly on, on task, as you suggested it, it's in motion, it's happening, everybody seems to be happy with it in its infancy.
So, I, so just in terms of this first goal, so I, I do feel like, so, like, we're not, like, it's how we're doing as a board, I know is what's really the most important. And I do feel like, very much as a board, we, we have been really supportive of the districts in terms of especially the individual learner profiles and, and the Haldane Academy. I feel like as an individual board member and especially somebody with expertise in ed tech, I feel like I'm not doing a service myself to actually have a better idea about what's going on. Like, and, and so, I don't want to speak on behalf of, of the board, but then I also feel like as a member of the board, this is actually an area of expertise that I really have. And I think there's still probably more that I would like, you know, that I would like to, to know, you know? I know from going to the ed tech meetings, the planning meetings, that, I mean, Leah's just doing so much all the time, you know? There's, there's so much happening, there's so much for her to do. But I think, I know this is something that we've been interested in and because that's, it's such, it's so, I think how ed tech can be used is kind of so amorphous in a way. It's hard for us as a board to really get a good handle on what's, on what's going on. I know there've been presentations, but anyway, I feel like I.
But actually, there hasn't been, I mean, I know that Leah spoke to us in like December, you know, and she presented. I actually wasn't at that meeting, so I maybe have missed something. But I believe the board has asked for a presentation of what the kids are using, their devices on, in the classrooms. And I'm not sure we've seen that yet.
No, and where that, no. And what, where you have seen it is the, what we have in the celebration in May, where the kids are showcasing all the work that they're doing. And so, that's, but, but sure, I mean, we can, that's certainly something we can bring kids in to, to talk about what they're using.
Like, you know, what do they do with their, their one-to-one iPads, like, what are they using them for? What's, you know what I mean, what's, and maybe that's something, I don't know, I feel like we've asked about that before and it hasn't really come to fruition for whatever reason, if it's a timing thing or if, I don't know what, but.
Well, maybe, I mean, we've, we've done more instructional technology versus the use of technology, so.
Yeah, and I think that's actually where our focus is and it makes sense. And I'll be honest, no offense, I don't really know if I want to hear kids talk about it. I think I want to hear teachers talk about it, I mean, that's me personally. I mean, I think that's who I want to hear speak thoughtfully and intelligently about it. Yeah, is teachers, and maybe a board presentation, that's a hard thing to ask them to do, right, maybe.
I was just going to say, we're going to be meeting with the high school students.
Oh, well, if we can ask.
But that's, it's kind of too, putting them right on notice.
Yeah, but last year, we met with them and we specifically asked that question. And the question was, in my opinion, the answer was very unsatisfying. It definitely showed to me that there was discrepancy, right? But in between the classes, like.
Speaking personally, from, as being a ninth-grade parent, where they just rolled out Chromebooks, that Chromebook gets used all day long and at night for homework. So, personally, I know what's happening, that it's, it's, right. And it's well worth the investment. Haven't seen a piece of paper. Teachers are exchanging via Google Classroom, they're posting assignments via Google Classroom.
So maybe we'll see a different, maybe we'll get a different answer when we ask that question this year. You know, maybe there's been a big shift in the, in a year.
There has been, I mean, when you look at what we're doing, I mean, everything at this point is being done pretty much, with the exception of the budget information on Google. And so, we share documents all the time and we've had a conversation before. No, it's just she didn't want it to be out there until we present to you.
No, that actually is really smart.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that, that's the kind of things that, that people often don't put on cloud, or they put on very secure cloud platforms. That makes sense.
Other thoughts on goal number one? Diana, do you have anything that you want to add about your goal number one?
Well, mine really is, includes all of the movement, instructional movement, which includes the, that are part of the strategic plan and the new tech network and what we're doing instructionally and with technology and the movement into Google. The one place that we're starting to have question marks and we're trying to decide what we're going to do, we have a platform, a learner platform that's related to the new tech network that isn't being as well utilized as we thought it would be. And people are starting to look at Power School and some of the new components that they have on Power School. And so, we may be looking at whether or not we want to stay with Echo or if we want to go to Power School. So, that conversation has begun and they've really start, they've started to ramp up Power School. Both are, they interface with Google, so that's not an issue. But we just want to make sure that what we're using is going to be as much of an enhancement for our students as it can be. So I think that that's something, that, that the discussion is happening.
And it's a space that's changing so quickly, you know?
Yeah. It is, it's changing very quickly and it's also, it's, it's kind of a natural progression right now, the way it's, it's kind of growing and developing. So, it's, and it's across the boards, it's across the district. So, John, would you like to comment at all? On just the, where we're going with technology and Google and Google Classroom and, or, you don't, since you're here.
Next time you can let me say I'm still not here.
Sorry, I'm.
So, hi, I'm John Shapizzi, I teach Spanish and French, middle school, high school. Regarding the technology, what I'm seeing is, I teach all the levels, which is kind of great, keeps me busy. My juniors are using iPads, my seniors are using iPads, my freshmen have Chromebooks. And I see the Chromebooks cart being used throughout the school, we have calendars set up, teachers are reserving it. It, for me, I can give my students a French composition and they can submit it to me. My juniors did a fable project and they were submitting their, their sentences to me. I was able to provide commentary right then and there. I was able to provide commentary right then and there, give it back to them. They looked at my weird correction code schematic that I use, and then they could either ask me questions, they could go to dictionaries, use their notes, revise, and we're doing that with that paper, which was great. I was actually able to revise their, their writing five or six times, which helped increase their accuracy, which I really did like. So, that's just one example. So, as far as it works in non-language classrooms, I don't know. But...
How about with college? Do you find yourself doing a lot more on Google Docs and doing some collaboration over that, or is that not happening?
Oh, we do try. The immersion program that the language department put on last Thursday was done primarily on Google. A lot of the, the students contributing, saying, oh, I want to present this piece of my original work. The students were submitting drafts of their translations for our programs that we create, their artwork. We were able to keep touch of the students. I just emailed a whole bunch of them because I need them to write thank you cards, especially to the Board of Education for their generosity and for letting the program continue. So, I was able to do that and able to keep track of that information through Google Classroom, which, that wasn't possible before. And now the students seem to have those devices, they can check their email much more easily. It does buzz them when I send them a comment. It buzzes me when they send me work. It's a nice system, it really is.
Great. Thank you. Sorry to put you on the spot.
That's okay. I'm used to that by now. Thank you.
Okay, so moving down to goal number two. Good thing we only have three of these to get through. Create clear and effective communication with the public. I feel like this is an ongoing goal, I feel like this will be our goal every year. I think Board Docs is getting more used. When I talk to people about it, I feel like they actually know what I'm talking about. And if they don't know what I'm talking about, they seem really excited to hear about it. And when I say, just go to the website and do this, that, and the other thing, they're like, oh. And I actually think they might do it. What I did ask in the beginning of the year, and I don't know if I've gotten an answer, was can we tell what the traffic is to Board Docs? So, you know, can we tell if there's increased traffic or not? I mean, I'm assuming we can tell through the website what the navigation is through that, through that link?
Yep.
But I don't know if Board Docs has their own process for knowing how many times people log in and out.
Because it's just a page.
Right. So I don't know, but I would like to ask Leah that, because I think that that would be a good thing for us.
I'll follow up with her.
You know, that's, all of our communication, it's, all of it's kind of intangible stuff. It's like, how do we track it, right? And we talked about ways that we can track Let's Talk that we'll be looking at along the way. But I'd love to know if we can track Board Docs.
I'm sure there's...
There's got to be something.
So this year, we had a couple of new initiatives. And one, we've been doing more, much more intensive newsletters. And they, there's been a lot of focus on the newsletters, the pictures. You know, Margaret made a great suggestion about really kind of ramping up our, our use of social media. And so, I don't know if you've been watching what has happened on Facebook, but...
It's incredible. I told you, as soon as you start really putting stuff out there, people are looking at it.
Am I going to have to get a Facebook account?
Stay strong, Peggy. I'm staying strong.
All right, I'll go through my husband, because I actually...
Well, you can click right into it. You don't have to go onto the website.
No.
And you can click in, it'll be, there's a little, a picture you click on, and you can go right into our page.
So you know what it is? It is now more kind of become like Haldane compliments, and it's become more like...
It's a celebration.
It's, it's Haldane pride. So it's...
It used to be celebrating.
Yeah, so it's, it's got pictures when the kids are winning the track meets, and it's got pictures of the middle school debate club and the miss, you know, stuff that's going on. But people go, oh, look, that's my kid. Oh, look, you know, I can't wait till my kid gets to the third grade, or I can't. And, and people have reacted to that in a very good way.
So we've, we've been looking, I mean, we still have the Twitter, but it's minimal. I think people are gravitating more towards the Facebook.
I want to say Simon Doudar is a strong Twitter. And I appreciate all the, I'd like to see the progress that that DCI class is making.
Yeah.
My son's part of that. And, yeah, it's been great. But I also want to comment on, and thank you, Dr. Bowers, for actually reaching out beyond just the technology-based. I know we've had several talks with different groups of the community and listening to their concerns and working together as a team. So I think we're doing a really good job at, and so are you, pulling the community into conversations.
And I, and it's very positive, there's a lot of positive momentum that happens when, when that occurs. And so, I think that, you know, as we do different forms of outreach, some work, some don't. I can tell you that right now, Let's Talk has been a big flop. I've only had, I think, just a few people reach out. I mean, it comes directly to you and you can respond, but it's just not something that this community wants to communicate through. So...
How has being in the middle school on Tuesdays and Thursdays?
Oh, I love it.
Yeah.
But how many people are taking, how many parents are taking advantage?
Do you see parents more?
I see parents more. I actually, I have, I had my office hours tonight, and that's not well utilized. People, I guess, at five o'clock really want to be home and making dinner and things like that.
It's not, it's not a good time.
Yeah. So, but I, you know, I'm...
How did it drop off?
Yes. At drop off.
You might get bombarded a little bit more.
So, I think it's, I think all in all. And, you know, I mean, it's, it's, there's more connection with parents, but honestly, I think what matters most to me is the increased connection with kids. And so, not that I don't think, parents, you're wonderful and you matter a lot, but...
But you like being in the school and seeing the kids. Of course, that's what you like.
Yeah. And so, I have the opportunity, if I, if I have a 15-minute block, that I can get up and walk into a classroom. And, you know, I'm invited to all different types of fun things, and it's, I always can make sure I'm at the concerts and the other things. And so, yes, it's, it's something I plan on continuing.
Well, that's great.
Yep.
That's so nice. It's nice to hear. So, given the fact that Let's Talk and the Is It True that aren't really exploding with, with people using them, should we just have, should we just call it a learning experience and move on and heavily just take them off?
And save money in the budget?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. And so, we did a one-year contract, and then it was, and it's...
So it ends at the end of the year?
Yeah.
Well, but actually, that's kind of a nice, it's kind of a nice outcome, right? Which is, like, I feel like this year, there were really, there was this multifaceted push or effort to increase communication. And what I heard Laura say, was that actually what people have chosen to do is actually come in and have conversations, right?
That's exactly what happens.
And so, that's, I would much rather see that than have somebody...
Right.
But at the same time, the Facebook thing has increased as well. It's like, it's like, that's what you have to do. You have to cast a wide net, see what works, what doesn't work, and then pay attention.
You don't learn anything if you don't try.
Yeah.
Right. And then you know what works for your community and what doesn't.
Right.
And each community will have a different type of area of interest, and so, we keep trying. But yes, that, Let's Talk is, I don't think is going to be a keeper.
Okay. Okay, any other thoughts about that goal? Should we... Okay, continuing on then. Number three, address buildings and grounds' needs with efficiency, transparency, and fiscal responsibility. Laura, did you want to kick that one off? You're deep in the B and G.
I think this is a pretty, I think we've spoken about this, we've given many reports on, and updates on the conditions of the building. Unfortunately, we're at a point where there are many projects that just need to be completed. They're not anything that's going to bring, you know, great beauty, I should say, but they are necessary repairs at this point. And that's really what we're talking about. The building condition survey that's been completed, that we're required to have done every five years, is what we're basing, you know, our, the majority of these tasks on. But also, it just seems like things keep, no pun intended, spring gonna leak here and there. And we have to address these items, unfortunately. Unfortunately. But we also have to remember the age of our building.
Right.
This building.
Well, and like Ann said a while ago, I mean, there have been years where, you know, the, the, there just weren't extra, there just wasn't the money. And so, you know, the building, the, the districts had to be very conservative and...
Yeah, and not think long term.
Right, right.
But just think that, in that moment.
Right.
Yep.
I mean, I'm enormously appreciative of the work that Laura's done. I mean, just amazing. And, and, you know, Mike Tordy and Diana and other members of the community, I mean, it's really has been a group effort. And Ann, of course, Ann, sorry.
And we are fortunate. I think we have a pretty good committee.
It seems like an amazing committee.
And come up with some good ideas to...
And a lot of expertise.
Expertise, right.
Which is very helpful, because those of us that don't have it really rely on people that understand the process.
Yeah.
Okay, so any other thoughts about our goals? Sounds like both the board and superintendent are in good motion with all of them. We'll talk about them again towards the end of the year. It's also what we base Diana's evaluation on, so we get to look at hers a little bit more critically. So we're moving on. Can I move our Haldane School Foundation?
Yes, I think we should move.
Report to the first one? You know, I was, Shannon was like, what time should I come tonight? I was like, oh, 7:30. Well, it's 8:30. You've had a riveting experience, I hope.
I always love to come to these. I have to admit.
Thank you, John. Can we write that on our website? Is that like a testimonial?
He's told me that in the past.
And it remains true. It was riveting. So, the Haldane School Foundation is here to talk to us about their fundraising and a possible, a request for a possible location request. So, come on up to the microphone, folks. And...
For the large audience, so...
Yeah.
I'm on camera, okay. You're up here with me in a bit. So, can you hear us? Okay. So, thank you for having us here tonight. Just a little bit of background about our request is that, you know, it's becoming harder and harder to compete for venue space here locally for our fundraisers. Things that are cost-effective, that get attendees to come, that are new and fresh, places that can hold 150 to 200 people at one time that are here locally in our community. So, you know, the reason that is, is because we are competing against lavish weddings for Saturday dates, really. The Hudson Valley has become very trendy for, for New York weddings, so we are really competing against, you know, weddings for Saturday dates, and it's been, it's been difficult. Our ticket price is really maxed out. You know, we can't raise ticket prices. Our fall event is $155 a ticket. That, that, we've lost people at that ticket price, quite honestly. And, and we really can't increase it. So, you know, really, we've been, we've been forced to get creative in terms of, of, you know, where we have events, what types of events we're going to have. You talked about casting a wide net of, of, of different things. We've got a lot of different fundraising ideas going on right now. Self-promotion, we have a online clean-for-the-cause fundraiser going on, which is brand-new online spring cleaning fundraiser. You can transform your unwanted treasures into field trip funds for Haldane. That's going on right now through May 10th. We have Haldane's Got Talent coming up on March 30th, which I understand there are Haldane faculty performances going on as well in this, which will be fun. And your daughter, did I hear your daughter's performing as well?
I'm performing.
Yeah, up at the town crier. And then, we've got the Taste of the Valley Glenwood fundraiser, which is on April 30th at Glenwood. So we're, we're really trying some different things. We just had our family-friendly roller skating fundraiser as well, which is up at Hyde Park this past month. So we're really trying some different things. So that being said, you know, we're really, you know, our request to you comes from a place of, of trying to get creative, having an open conversation about having a fundraising event here at, at Haldane. Originally, our fall fundraiser, but we're, we're open to, you know, if the fall fundraiser format doesn't work here, you know, maybe trivia night or something like that. I'd like to say that we could have a fundraiser without beer and alcohol. However, I think that a Saturday night, you know, date night, having beer and alcohol is, is probably, you know, not needed, but, but part of our events and what we've done in the past. So, I know there was a question that's, that's come up about liability in terms of, you know, who would be liable for something along those lines. And I just, I wanted to make sure that you knew that, you know, the foundation does have a liquor liability policy that, you know, for a million dollars, which, which does cover any sort of, you know, claim or incident that, that would come from an event that was hosted by us. It's a, it's a host policy. And a lot of our venues require us to have them named as the insured for a specific event. So that's what we do for Glenwood. They're also a nonprofit. We have an event at their location. We, we give them a, a certificate of insurance for that particular event, which covers anything from, you know, any sort of incident that happens there, you know, during those, those hours. So I know that was one of the questions, so we definitely wanted to make sure you knew about that. You know, I knew there was also maybe an issue about sending the wrong message here on campus with alcohol and students. And, you know, I think the original idea was maybe a parent prom, but maybe there might be some issues combining those two ideas in terms of sending the wrong message to high school students. So we would be open to different formats. But I guess the question is, is it a possibility for the foundation to have an event here at the school within the current format that we're, that we're talking about? So I wanted to, you know, come talk to you, answer any questions, and, you know, see if there was any possibility.
Thanks, Shannon. And I'm going to be the first to admit that I had many of those questions and concerns. And as you know, I am a strong supporter of the Haldane School Foundation, myself personally and my organization. You don't have high school children yet.
True.
And there have been many occasions where I've been approached, Dr. Bowers has been approached, there is a great deal of concern. Liability is an issue. I think we had a clear, no, you should not be hosting these types of events, not only from our insurance company, but also from our attorney. And when that comes across, that's, you know, immediately like, why are we even entertaining this? So, yes, you're correct, there's a liability. I'm more concerned with the mixed signals and the issues that we're currently dealing with right now. So I would tend to say, this is not an option for me, unfortunately.
Can we just hear from Dr. Bowers, too? Can you just clarify? Because Dr. Bowers was the one who spoke to our attorney and our insurance company and just asked them, like, is this, what's possible? Could you just share?
So, the first question was, is there some, is there a legal requirement, or is there a law that would prohibit it? And basically, the answer was no. But then the follow-up was, but why would you do that to yourself? Or why would you consider doing that? And I think that that was both from our lawyer, and you also spoke to the insurance company. And they just said, it's, it's really too much of a risk, and it's too problematic. But the other, on the other hand, you know, I think that there may be places that we could help approach and look at within the community. And I, I just, there's, there's some of these Knights of Columbus types places and that are here that probably could hold that number of people. And I don't know if, if that's been ever considered, or if you've already approached people with that and... people with that and.
No, I, I haven't been on the board nearly as long as Shannon. And I know that they've done remarkable due diligence about looking at all the venues, creative and otherwise, around this, around this location. So I appreciate your offers, recommend, well-received. And if you come up with any ideas, we'd love to hear them. I think I can completely understand the alcohol questions, both in terms of a liability question and a messaging question. Let's take that out of the consideration set. And so if there were a non-alcoholic event that the Haldane Foundation would be interested in hosting at, on the Haldane property, would that be in scope? Because we are constantly looking for venues, new and different. Alcohol is a part of what we do as a fun event to go to when you're having dinner, when you're having drinks, when you're at trivia night. That doesn't need to say that needs to be part of every single event that we do. So setting aside that request for a number of very good reasons, would there be a possibility for the foundation to do something on the, the campus grounds of some other structure? And I want to hear from everybody, including Laura.
I really appreciate the context, right? Like, it had never, I had, it hadn't occurred to me, quite honestly, that that, that it makes sense that that's a challenge, you know, as they're more and more to find a place. And I do really appreciate that. I have to say, I am, I am solidly in the no alcohol on campus.
That's fine.
Contented, you know, that's what I am. But the idea of actually having something on campus, I don't, I mean, that, it sounds like it could be a nice idea.
Right. Well, we just, we just had a roller party up at Hyde, there was no alcohol. There were 130 people there with kids. It was fantastic. I, for one, have discovered a new love of roller skating. So whatever that scope is, we're into similar questions of usage, right? And similar questions, I'm sure they're liability questions. We do have a rider that provides a million dollars, but I'm sure that would have to be cleared through processes as well. I just want to get a sense from the board whether they think in the absence of alcohol is a question, whether you think that would be appropriate.
Can we just go around? Because I have a feeling the answer is yes.
They've done it before. The school foundation has done it years and years ago. They did all kinds of things before.
So is that, that's a yes? If there's no alcohol, you're cool?
No alcohol.
I, I think it'd be great. And I love the prom idea. I mean, that was what I was going to, like, to do that prom idea.
You've got bell bottoms, you can bring them.
I don't know if you're going to get people dancing without any alcohol.
You played a theme to the breakfast club.
No, I'm going to say it. And it's true.
It's going to happen.
So you're fine with an event as long as there's no alcohol?
Uh, yes.
Yes, yes.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, so it sounds like that's a definitive yes.
Great, good.
And it sounds like you've got some very definitive noes about the with alcohol that probably cannot be persuaded. Is that what I'm, okay, so.
We appreciate that. I think the challenge for us is we're getting squeezed. If you think about that $155 ticket, myself, my wife, and a babysitter, and an expectation that I'm probably going to make an auction bid, or to get fund an item, you're very quickly talking about a $500 to $600 a night investment. And that immediately prices out a number of people. We're trying to be more inclusive and expansive in terms of the number of events that we have that are lower price points.
More, more people for a lower ticket.
Also, you got to do those in scale. So we need a couple of big-ticket events to bring in the roughly $90,000 that we contribute every year. It's getting harder. So we're trying to see the things that we can do, and we really appreciate your guys considering it.
We're very appreciative, like you said.
Yeah, no, absolutely. We're all, we're all trying to do the same thing. It's just like.
Unfortunately, there are many different circumstances surrounding.
I have an idea for a space that I'll mention to you after.
Fantastic.
I do, I do. Yeah, and I think, and I think that's the thing that, that it's important for us to keep in mind. I mean, I'm sure you all are better, the foundation's probably the best-connected group of people in town. So if y'all can't find a spot, I don't know who can. But it is, you know, I think to let the community know that it's something that you need and want, you know, it seems like, I mean, of course, we'd love to have the foundation do something at the school, you know.
Fantastic. Really appreciate it. Appreciate the time.
Thanks for sharing. Thanks for doing everything you do.
Thank you for your patience.
I like it.
Yes. John's like, I don't have to leave, do I? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving into our referendum conversation.
Okay, so you've, we've begun to talk about this over the last month or two, about the, the potential of considering multiple referenda in the very near future. And I think we've come to a conclusion that we're going to ask the public to vote on releasing some of the funds that we have in our capital reserve, so we can put new bleachers, new seating in the library, and some extras in the large gym this year. And it will be less than $100,000 project. The money's already there. All we would be doing is releasing it. But the, the real conversation that we need to have in earnest and really start thinking of this is the potential of another one, a real bond referendum the following year. And it would take a while to really understand what we're looking to do, but if, I can tell you, for the Building and Grounds Committee, there are some real issues that we presently have to address. And something as simplistic, it's, it's expensive, but it's simplistic as having heat in this building. And we are at the point that the system that we have in this building, which was built in the 1930s, is failing. And we have, and it's not, it's not the boilers. We have brand-new, well, not brand-new, but new boilers, and they're working well, but they're pushing out steam and water into a system that's failing. And it's pipes that are behind the walls in this building, and the only way you can get them is to go through the walls. And this year, we've already had four pipes fail in different places. And when we brought in an expert to really take a look at what we were contending with, he said, it's just going to keep happening because of the age of the system. And I guess it's the, the place where the concrete meets the pipe, and it's corroding from the outside in because of that, which is kind of different than we originally thought. But we're, we're on borrowed time at this point. There may be, if, if a major pipe fails, we're going to have to look at doing something a little different. And we're talking about the fact that within the next couple of years, we have to do something with the heating system. We're looking at putting in a system that's different, retiring the old system, because it would be too cost prohibitive to go into the walls and to actually work with those pipes. We're talking about putting a new system in above the ceiling of new pipes, moving from steam to all water, and making it a, a more modern system that would, that would work well. Financially, probably is, would be a cost savings, I would imagine. We haven't done any kind of assessment on that. But Laura, you've been with us right every step of the way, so anything you want to include there?
Going back to those projects that really aren't going to add so much beauty, but it's something definitely that we need to do. Our walls are literally crumbling at points, and even though they're cement block walls due to this issue with the steam. So unfortunately, it has to be done. And I think it's just been kind of put on the back burner for so long, you know? There's only so much patching and repatching we can do.
You have it here as a possible proposition, number one. Yeah, and I, I know that there's two. But looking at number one, you said maybe doing that on the May 2018 vote, right? Does that actually give us enough time? Is that too late? I guess is my question.
Well, it would, it'll be a number of years before everything's put in place, because right now, if, if we begin to move in that direction, we have to start launching some really fact-finding things and really coming with some information. This, the first proposition would include, also, we've talked about the, the need to change the windows and, and the sills in the elementary school. There are a couple of bathrooms that would be renovated, which are also very old and antiquated and need attention. And parking and asphalt and just, that's just basically the structural pieces of the district.
But if we don't do the vote till May 2018.
Right.
Can we, is there anything at that point, post-vote, say it's voted yes, right? And we're going to move forward? Do we then need to, like, wait for state approval for things, right? So are we kind of pushing to maybe six months from then to actually start doing some of these projects?
It may even be longer.
Might even be longer, depending on state ed's approval.
So we don't have to wait until May. We can have the vote at a different time, but it also, we have to do all the architectural work. And there's a lot of things that have to go into a real extensive bond project.
So do you think it would take us, like, the next year to be ready to bring it to vote?
Probably. And so, so there are a number of things that we were talking about, taking this, if it is May 8 of 2018, potentially having two components or two different propositions, maybe one vote, two propositions, or we can have two major components within one proposition. The other piece we've been talking about adding is to put an extension on the high school. We're going, we're talking about a minimal extension, something that's, you know, not a Cadillac, but rather a Ford, maybe a 5,000-square-foot addition onto the left side of the high school, which originally was going to have something built there. And what our, our architect is recommending is to have a very large group area that is, that has movable walls and can be multiple things, including classroom space, have a cafe up there, so the kids don't necessarily have to travel for lunch. Talks about movable walls, can have a large group instruction, a black box theater, a wellness room, all the different components. And it's, we can reconfigure it based on the needs for that room. So we're not talking about something that's multiple levels, but we're talking about something that has multiple options within that. But, but with nice high ceilings and, you know, and new technology and the things that we would want our kids, a place for our kids to come and to explore and all the things that we can use it for.
And this is the kind of space we talked about in the strategic.
Plan, right.
Yeah, exactly. Absolutely. I mean, it was, it came up every single week. I didn't go to every meeting, but I went to quite a few. The, the need for, for different kinds of space that, that allow for other kinds of activities and, and, yeah, I mean, it came up. I mean, it was broadly recognized.
And for the people that haven't been in the high school, and you don't really, if, if you've not spent much time there, basically, the high school, we have classrooms, we, and we have offices. And that's really all that's in the high school. So there's, there's not a cafeteria, there's not a gymnasium, the music rooms aren't there, art rooms aren't there. And we, we would like to have something that would allow the students to have more connection in certain areas to the building. And as we look at what's going to happen, if we did a demographic study, it looks like we're, we're holding pretty steady at this point, and if not, we may be looking at more. But, you know, I think that we, there's a lot to do, and we don't have the space to do it.
And so I just want to make sure I understood what you just said, that demographic projections are that the size of the school is going to stay the same.
Well, what we're seeing right now, it looks like that. I mean, I think that part of what we should be doing is a demographic study sooner or later, too, so we, we know what it's going, what's going to happen in the community. But we have, right now, we, we don't have enough space to do what we need to do. You know, our, our, the, the high school is spread out into Mabel Merritt. It's, it's here, and we have kids traveling all over multiple places in the district just to have enough space.
And my memory also is that a major factor, one of the major factors in not being able to push the high school's start time later was related to space.
It was a component there.
It was a component, yes. It was a component, that lunch was a big issue. There was, yeah.
Cafeteria.
Yeah, and music. It was that, yeah. That, that space was a, was a significant, not, one of the components, I'll say.
And we're feeding kids from kindergarten through 12th grade in this one cafeteria.
Right, from like nine in the morning. Pete had lunch at 9:30 one year, 10:30 maybe, but it was early.
So these things that we're pushing off until the May 8, 2018 vote, are we the slightest bit concerned that something could happen before then?
Yes, and actually, what we've, what we've done is, we've looked at contingency plans, and we've talked about, like, what would happen if we had a major break. And, I mean, we, we would have to do, we would have to jury-rig something to keep us going. And what they were, they were talking about concerns with the pump and, and the storage for the water. And looking at it from the outside, looking in, it looks, it's like it's decaying. They, the architects and the, the expert that he brought with them thought we could probably get to the point where we would actually have a new heating system. We could probably do that. And then they were talking, if we didn't, we'd have to literally bring in some kind of truck that had hot water circulation in it. And so that we would have to, I mean, we're at that point where we have to, we have to look at contingencies in case one day we come in and we have no heat.
Right. So should we be looking at moving this up so that we don't have to spend money on the jury-rigged part?
Well, if you.
Or it's not, it's just physically not possible.
I don't know if it would be possible.
To do it any sooner than, it's just impossible to get it together before then.
To get the schematics together, to get the plans to get, I mean.
There's also a community outreach that needs to happen on this.
A lot of discussion.
So May 2018 is the earliest, earliest, earliest.
I don't know. What we talked to John, I mean, once we get the green light, we're going to have him start, start to put information together, create a timeline. And it, we, could we do it a couple months earlier, maybe? Maybe. Would it be substantially earlier? No.
And you're talking about a green light from the board? Is that what you're asking for?
And so we, we talked about doing a couple of things. One is having one vote on that day and having people vote on two separate propositions. Or we could have one vote and have one proposition, and then if it, if it didn't pass, we could consider another option, maybe vote them separately. But we do need, we need the space. I mean, one is absolutely mandatory, there's no question. We're not going to be able to keep school in session in an unspecified period of time, so we have to do something. And then the other is, you know, whether or not we want to continue to invest in the structures in the district to allow all the things that we want to happen in our schools to happen.
Yeah, I mean, to me, these are two very different proposals, with two very different explanations and two very different selling points, really, you know, to the community. And that my fear would be if we put them both up separately for a vote, that one could get voted in and one could very easily get not voted in. I guess if you combined them both into one proposition, then you have the possibility that it would all get voted down, which would be a really big problem. But I mean, and I don't know the politics of it, like, if, if it's better to kind of lump it all together, or if it's better to separate it out like this. But to me, these are two very different things. Like, proposition one is a no-brainer. It's like, it's a have-to. It's like, this is not a nice-to-have, this is a need-to-have. Proposition two, although I can personally say I think this is a need-to-have, I think it was, will be seen as a nice-to-have by a lot of, a lot of the community. And if we're not sure yet what it is going to mean financially, and that information will come, right? Like, how much out-of-pocket is this actually going to cost? I mean, that's going to be a big part of selling it.
Well, I can tell you what we talked about, and it's pure guesstimate at this point. Somewhere between three and four million for each component. So you could be looking at an $8 million bond referendum, but then we also have building aid, which is about a third, 34 cents on the dollar or so. And so we would get that, the state funding would pay for a third of it, and the, and the local share would be about two-thirds of that.
Right, but I mean, like, how much is it going to take out of somebody's pocket every year?
And then we would have to calculate that.
That information, that's going to be key.
We also talked about tax-neutral. Some would be, could be tax-neutral from debt, falling, old debt falling off our books.
So we're going to, we were talking, I think at one point, we're talking about something slightly over a million dollars, maybe a million and a half, that would be kind of a, just, old debt would be retiring, we would continue and then do something with, and then it would be consistent, it wouldn't cost any additional money. And that could also be considered. So we could talk about the tax-neutral component and also the, the aid that would, building aid that would come to us.
I just want to build off what Jen said, that she's right, it's really two, like, there's two different rationales. Even proposition two, that's the addition to the high school, is, is modest, right? It's not, it's not extravagant. is, is modest, right? It's not, it's not extravagant. But, I do think, I mean, it's up, it's up to the district to communicate really clearly, as well as all of the folks who are, you know, connected to even recommending some of those changes. I mean, this, talk about communication. I mean, it really becomes beholden to us to make, make the case for proposition one and proposition two. There's a piece of me that does actually think they, there's a part of me that actually wants them to be separate at the, in this minute, because I would actually like the community to really decide if they want to do number two. And to feel like it's this, it's this, it's a statement of, yes, this is something that we want to do and not something that people kind of felt like they had to vote on because there were these other things that, that they, that, that the school is asking for. By separating them, yes, there is this risk of number two not being voted in. I think it's something that we all think is important, but, but by having it be voted on separately, yeah, it gives us the opportunity to make that case and it gives the community the opportunity to make the decision affirmatively whether or not it's an investment that the community wants to, to make. And I think that's actually, that's really important.
I think it will, although the people who participated in the strategic plan, which was a very small group of voters, although that group of people is probably, you know, they're probably very much in that affirmative group of like, heck yeah, you know, this is something that we want, we know we need it. I would love to hear from the community at large though, what their feelings are on it. And not just in a, let's go to the senior center and convince them to do it. I'd almost be more like, let's go to the senior center and talk to them about this and see if that's even something that they're, they buy into. Like, do they think it's worth putting up for a vote, you know? Does, so I feel like for me, proposition number two, I have a lot more questions about like the best way to go about it on a, like a community level. I don't know the answer to that yet.
But proposition one is, that needs to be voted on yesterday.
Right.
I wish we could include it in this.
And are there any things on there on proposition one that, that need to be moved to the 2017, the May 2017 vote? Like, I thought the windows and the windowsills were insurance issues. Like, I thought they had to be done right away.
They did do.
They did enough repair and then it's okay.
Sixes to reinsure the windows. Sort of jury rig was the term, but, yeah, we got it to a safe point.
It can wait now for a couple of years. We did the mandatory parts.
So, because along, along the lines of what Margaret's saying, again, and I have a thought on proposition, on the proposition two thing, but it's like, here we are, we're talking about these kind of needs that we must have, the bathrooms, the windows, so, but the, but the, the May 2017 scoreboard, you know, so, like, like, why is the scoreboard taking precedent over like the bathroom in, in the elementary school?
The scoreboard has been something I've asked about as well. It's kind of, all of a sudden, but it's, there's a package.
I'm just saying, you know, it's.
There seems to be a package deal situation with the scoreboard, from what I understand, if either anybody would like to.
What do you mean?
If you get the bleachers, if you get the bleachers and the scoreboard, it's a better deal.
Oh, okay.
That's why it's kind of been.
And we're trying to stay under 100,000. In order for us to do something quickly and release the funds from the capital, we have to do it, we have to be under 100,000 dollars.
Right, okay.
And the bleachers, sorry, the bleachers are an insurance item. This is not just like, we're replacing the bleachers because we feel like it, they've been on our insurance reports for several years.
Okay. So, in, in the wording of it, again, it's not to be kind of play, a play with words, but, I mean, it just kind of, because bleachers, score, like, it's just weird, like, oh, we gotta do this quick, we need a new scoreboard, okay?
I agree. That's what it looks like.
Not elementary school carpet.
So, you know, but maybe like, like gymnasium renovation.
Yes.
You know, which includes bleachers, scoreboard, so forth.
We can certainly do that.
You know, I mean.
Yep, yeah. And, and that's really what it is. I mean, we, we can add a little more to the gymnasium renovations and still stay under 100,000, so they advocated for the new scoreboard.
Okay.
And the reason why we're able to do it, I'm sorry, the reason why we're able to do it this year is because of the simplicity of the project. It's just a purchase and an installation. It's something that when you go through SED, it's called a Level One, because there's no plumbing, there's no electrical installation involved. So, those items are easily, more easily approved through SED, and there's less architectural plans that have to be developed and passed. It, it's just really, and it's something that we don't have to bond for. So, that project in itself is, is an easy, is an easy thing to do. The other is planning and approvals and a lot of professional input that we need for it.
And the bleachers were part of the original, since I've been on the board for the past year and a half, they were part of that original schematic that, with the ratings of what needed to be repaired. So, it's not like that was a new item, but again, because of the simplicity, we said, what can we do this year? Let's start chipping away at this list. And that's how we came up with.
And along the lines of the proposition two, just as a comment, I mean, we don't even need to get into the, to the, you know, as far as combining them or separate right now, okay? But, I, I, I think, you know, because the bottom line is if, if we don't put it up in some way, either separate or together, it'll be another six, seven years before it even gets discussed. So, I know the high school, that, that whole high school thing here, I mean, you, you, you guys probably knew more about that. That was like right when I first got to call, you weren't even here yet, when I first got to call, but I didn't even know anything about it really, but I, I know it was a debacle. And, but, but you know, you think about it, that was before the internet and email and, and real communication. And it was probably a lot of, you know, I, I think something like that would, would pass now. When you think of the high school, how is, like, what's not in the high school now, you know, it's, it's, it's kind of a little mind-boggling. So, I think, I think it's time. And I think, I think it will pass. Absolutely, the communication has got to be there, but I, I, I think, I, I think, I think it'll pass. Again, you know, not to play with words, you know, you know, yoga, Pilates, that sounds a little, a little too, you know, frivolous type of thing, fluffy, whatever you want to call it. Okay, again, you know, at, you know, gymnasium, just, you know, we need a gymnasium for, for the high school.
It's kind of gentler.
No, but I'm just saying, it just, it's like, you know, oh, $8 million proposition for a Pilates studio.
No, wellness.
So, you know, but it, but it is, it is, it is necessary, all, all the other stuff. You know, I don't know if you want to throw air conditioning in there somehow. I don't know if that's a possibility, but.
Throw it in.
I, I, I think definitely, I, I think if you're gonna, if we're gonna go for it, I'd say go for it, you know? And again, we don't need to debate, you know, whether it's one proposition or two separate propositions, but I, I think, I think if we're going to go for it, everything should be on it, okay? How we structure it to be determined, but I, I would say, let's go for it.
And Evan, I'm just going to pause you. So, do you want to change the tape? Okay, good. So, what do you need from us at this point? It sounds like, I mean, you're getting support to, to go for it. We don't know exactly the best way to prop one and prop two as separate or all together, or do it as all together and doesn't vote, then separated out. Like, when do we need to make those?
Whether you combine or it's one.
I think we have some time yet. I mean, what we're going to now start to do is start to have John D'Angelo start collecting information, beginning the process, giving us an idea of the timeline and all the components. And then, we're going to have to really put into, in earnest, a list of the things that would have to go into it. He can start getting estimates and then we'll, we'll know what we're talking about dollar-wise. And then, at that point, once we have an idea of what's being recommended, then we're going to have to make that decision before we go to vote.
But I think we have to do needs and then ones.
Yeah, I, I think that's a very good point, like, to, to kind of force, to feel like people, we don't want people to feel like you're forcing their hand into expanding the high school because we want to provide heat for the elementary school.
Yeah, yeah.
If you want them to have heat, then they're going to have to have the Pilates studio.
Right, right. So, I, I think that's, that is definitely.
So, I think we're in agreement that we could put the proposition for May on.
Yeah, that's it.
And.
This May.
This, well, just for the bleachers.
For the bleachers.
Gymnasium renovations.
Yes.
Gymnasium renovations.
And library renovations.
Yes.
Yep. And then.
And then let's see all the information around the others.
And then we're going to have to, we'll probably start offering, for anybody who's interested, we should be starting a community focus group and start those conversations and, and really start diving into the process.
Okay. It's going to be great.
Yep, thank you. Okay, so, a couple of other things. We will be moving into executive session on Tuesday, March the 21st, prior to the Board of Education Workshop meeting from five to seven. And this will be to discuss the employment history of particular individuals. There's a Board of Education Workshop meeting on the same date from, at seven o'clock, and we invite you to come to that. And that's it for me.
That calendar.
Oh, calendar, I'm sorry, the calendar. We, we do have the most recent version of the calendar that's gone through our calendar committee. There were a couple of questions about different dates associated with this, with the spring break. But, this probably took us, and actually, all the districts and BOCs, this was a very difficult calendar to come up with for a number of different reasons. And this was the calendar that allowed us to do all of the things that the committee wanted to make sure was done. And it's, it's one that, we originally had the, the April break as part, as part of it, instead of the last week in March, it was the first week in April. And so, for a number of reasons, we ended up during the last meeting, pushing it back to the last week in March. And it was able to accommodate many different things. It has, we have both Good Friday and Easter Monday off. We also have Passover beginning on the 30th, and so, we'll have a four-day weekend for Passover. We did have a request to consider it for the entire April week, so it could be all through Passover. But, there were a lot of things that we would not be able to accommodate if that were to occur. So, this is the recommendation from our committee.
I think it'd be helpful for the public to know who's on the calendar committee and what the process is. I certainly don't ever want to be part of that committee. Because this, just looking at it is, yeah.
So, we have, it's, it's all the units within the district, they send representation, and we all sit down and kind of make our decisions about what we're going, what we're looking for. We look at the requirements from the state. One of the reasons why this is as late as it was is because we just found out about the, the state was very late giving us the, the test dates for next year. And so, and one of the other reasons about the April break, the, the tests are beginning, the ELA tests begin on the 11th of April, and our students would only be back in session two days and before the tests began, which was also a consideration. So, it's just, it's, it's a cross-section of the entire district. We all sit down and have conversations. I think we probably had three or probably four meetings before we finalized, and it, many different machinations. So, we've, this is, this is what we're recommending.
Since there was a concern expressed, which I guess we'll get to when we talk about correspondence from the public, so what made this, a couple of minutes on what made this a particularly difficult year? And then, you mentioned there were a number of things that you wanted to accommodate, and you mentioned Good Friday off, Easter Monday off, part of Passover off, but were there other, like, and the, the ELA stuff?
Yeah, that was, but those were the things to consider for that one specific piece. The other thing is, we, we were looking at the dates, the give-back dates, what would happen if we didn't have snow days, what would happen if we had a lot of snow days? And there was a ripple effect there. And there was a, a real strong request that there would be a week in the spring where if people wanted to vacation, they could. And if we didn't, with the give-back, if we have too many snow days, we start taking dates away.
Right, right.
And so, in order to be able to accomplish that, one of the give-back days, if, on the fifth snow day, would be, we would lose Easter Monday. And then, the second is, is actually, we would move a full superintendent's conference day to a half day and have a half day student day and two half-day superintendent's conference days together. So, all of that. And it was, it was almost impossible to do that in, if it was the first week of April.
I noticed the day, that Friday before Memorial Day was given up. That's a little disappointing, but I'm sure there's reasoning.
Well, actually, that was, we had both the 25th and the 28th at one point, but we were taking it from the February break.
Oh, okay.
And so, we would have had less days. And one of the things that I can tell you from my experience, there is usually, we usually have a lot of illness in the building right before the February break. And having enough time for people to recuperate and come back, we, we are much healthier after the break than we were before the break. And so, at one point, we had only the Monday off with one of the calendars, and then if we had the April break, we would have had, the 25th would have been instead of the 21st of February.
And normally, sorry, I'm like.
The thing that jumped out at me with the calendar, with, with that week, I mean, mostly that week, was, it's interesting that we got that correspondent because, you know, because we were always on the, I was always in the assumption that we were always told that the, you know, our break is based on BOCs, as far as the eight, we follow the BOCs calendar.
That's right.
So, now, BOCs hasn't come out with their calendar yet.
BOCs has come out with the calendar, and about a third of the districts are taking the March week, and about two-thirds of the districts are taking the April. And so, originally, one of the reasons why we were strongly supporting the April initially is because we thought everybody was going to do the April break. And then, we started having districts that started changing. I know that Peekskill and, Peekskill and Lakeland have now the same week as, in March, yes. And then, Crouton is doing something kind of unique where they're doing three days in March, in the March week, and then three days in the April week. And so, it's, so there's, there's, there's different machinations.
But what about the BOCs, like, what about BOCs itself? Like, the actual, when we send the kids to BOCs?
Right. The BOCs calendar has the April break, but just as, it's same thing happened this year. And we've had different, we have, we have very different February breaks and we're having, we have different spring breaks. Excuse me.
See, I, that's my, that's my concern. The, the, the holiday, Easter, Passover thing is, because it's happened before where, so, either way, both are taking, you know, Good Friday and Good Mon, and, and Monday are there, and, and, and the, the start of Passover. So, either way, I don't, I don't think the, that argument is, is there, because, because we don't necessarily, you know, be follow Passover as, as the, the whole week. But, we've always, I mean, it's been always my assumption, and I've never, I've never checked up on it, but I've always, because it's funny that this happened, because this came out, and I was talking with my wife and another Haldane parent about it, and they were like, why do we have that? Because all these schools are closed the first week of April. I was like, no. I was like, if we do, we follow the BOCs calendar. So, if we're off, that means BOCs is off. It's not just Haldane, but I was wrong when I said that, I guess.
Yep. And we, and we did not even consider that March week until we saw that there was going to be two.
But what are the others, but what is, but what is it, what does it matter that they're also taking off? Like, the, the point is, like, our kids that go to BOCs are basically now going to be missing school for two weeks.
Well, the, the reason why, there's accommodations made. When you have a number of, number of districts within the BOCs that have separate vacations, accommodations are made for the kids.
But, but, again, I'm.
Why don't we do, why aren't we going with the BOCs calendar? That's what you're asking.
Yeah, and like, yeah, what does it matter that, that Peekskill is also doing it? Like, like, BOCs is closed that week, so what's the difference if Peekskill is doing it or not?
That was all, that was all discussed in, in the calendar. And so, the ripple effects, there are many, and we would not be. Well, that was all, that was all discussed in the calendar. And so, the ripple effects, there are many, and we would not be looking at the March unless we knew that there were gonna be accommodations made for the kids. That was actually the first and the most important driving factor. Could we use the BOCs calendar? Yeah. And then, a lot of the things that we were trying to achieve, we wouldn't be able to achieve in the calendar.
Me personally, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that we table for the approval, because I respect the fact that we have a calendar committee. But it's been always my understanding that our policy is that we've, our April break is based on BOCs' April break. So it's nothing to do with the religious thing, okay, as I said, 'cause either way, both are covered. My issue is that, like, we just totally, we've just totally, we've decided to go off, off of that tradition that we've always just, when BOCs is closed, we're closed.
Well, first, maybe you're wrong about the tradition.
And maybe, well.
I don't know.
I don't, I don't.
Since we, since I've been here, this has happened at least one other time.
Where BOCs was open, was closed when we were open?
We have two very different vacations, yeah.
What is Garrison doing?
Honestly, I don't know.
'Cause that'll have to do with the busing, that'll have to do with the after-school program, the before-school program, all of those things.
Well, they come, whoever comes, we've had situations where they have had different days, and the kids still come on our calendar if they're going to our school. And what we have to do is, I mean, Garrison tried transportation during the time, but their district is off. So they still would come. If they're coming to Haldane, they'll still come to Haldane during the times.
Right. What I'm saying is, if they're the other week, then again, they're missing two weeks.
No, no, they're not missing.
Not if it's our kids, don't go there.
Yeah, they just come here.
They're not missing. They're making accommodations on the busing side to get them here.
Yeah.
Right, but the busing gets all screwed up for them for two weeks.
I imagine their staff's vacation gets messed up. Instead of all of the staff vacationing at the same time, some staff are being pulled in to bus some kids.
They don't have an in-house busing company anyway, so that's really neither here nor there.
I guess, I mean. I guess my question for Evan and Margaret, who seem to have the most hesitation about it, is, I mean, and maybe what you want to do is hear more about what the, what the talking was that went on in the, in the, in the calendar committee. 'Cause the way Diana explained it to, the way I understood what Diana said, was that there are multiple people across the district who engaged in a pretty extensive and systematic discussion about what they thought was best, was best for the district. And, and.
Obviously, it's a big consideration.
Why would we, why would we, why would we question, why would we question that? Like, like, so we don't have the same vacation as BOCs? I mean, I just know from when, the little while that Pete was there, that lots of schools have different vacations. They have different start days, they have different end days, they have different vacation days, and it's just something that BOCs accommodates, right? Pete started one day, and the other half of his class started the next day. I mean, it's just this thing that happens when you have multiple, multiple districts. So to me, yeah, yeah, I guess. That's, I'm just curious.
The only other thing I noticed were the two-hour delays are now staggered, like, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
And the reason why we, I mean, that's, that's something we can change. It's not, if it's, if it's a certain preference, but we were missing the same classes every Friday.
Yeah, I heard a lot of comments about that.
And so.
I'm concerned. I just thought on the other side, the parent's side.
They were always used to Friday, yeah.
For planning purposes, not really that it was a Friday and they could account, but maybe not. I don't know.
Well, the difference is, for the middle school and the high schools with the rotational calendars, there were, the kids were missing the same classes five days. So.
But other than that, it's working for the teachers, and everybody kind of eventually bought in and said, "Okay, this is, this'll work." Good.
So, again, I go back to, to answer your question, is because, I mean, I was under the impression that that's, that was pretty much, whatever they did, we did. And, you know, I think from a perspective of, I mean, we have a lot of families that where the parents work in schools in some capacity, and throughout the area, Westchester, Putnam, Duchess. And, you know, if predominantly, I mean, again, if it's 50/50, and, you know, it is what it is, you gotta, you know, but if most school districts are taking off the first week in April, you know, I, again, I'm not gonna sit here and micromanage the committee. But that was my major concern, that we kind of went off script with, "Oh, we must follow BOCs."
Well, if, I can tell you that since I've been here, there has been a dichotomy with calendars every year. So I think that what, if you're, if there was an expectation that everybody follows the same BOCs calendar, that's not happening.
Well, no, but that's not, that's irrelevant if another school district does or doesn't. We do. That was always the point. So now we don't.
Well, if we, if that's, if you give a directive for the district, I mean, that's something we can consider. We have, we do have the April calendar as well. I mean, we have one that, because initially, that was coming, and I think I actually gave, the first copy I gave you, was that April? That was an April one. So, you know, we've been kind of back and forth, and we, this was able to accommodate everything we wanted to accomplish with it.
So, but what are we accommodating? We don't want to have, we don't want to be off right before testing. I get that. Like, that surprises me that, and that two-thirds of the schools thinks that's okay, 'cause their testing is the same day, right?
Yep.
That, so, somebody thinks that's okay, if two-thirds of them are thinking that's okay.
But our district doesn't think that's okay.
Okay, right, right.
But I don't really care what the other districts think.
What I'm saying is.
I'm actually surprised the state is giving it.
Yeah, I'm surprised at that, too. So that, and I understand that that's a big concern. I get that. What were the other reasons for moving it?
There were a number of reasons. One is to keep three days of February, because initially, in order to have the give-back days, we would have to, at minimum, take one of the days and put it, that was originally in the May, that would, when we had a four-day.
Right, 'cause you couldn't take Good Friday away if you had to take the Friday.
Yep. So we had, that was also part of it. And I can tell you what my concern, my biggest concern was the February break and giving enough time to let things.
To let people get healthy.
Yeah, get better. So.
That concept of, so some people are taking, like, March 28th through April 4th? Is that what you, some people are doing half?
That's half the 30th.
Oh, half the week in March and half the week in April.
That's Crouton, I think, is doing that.
Oh. But our lady, our staff wanted a full week. They requested a full week of vacation.
But that is a full week, it's just.
You miss the weekends.
Yeah, they just wanted it so it didn't, we weren't giving back days during the week if people, you know, bought tickets and were planning if you go somewhere.
Yeah, maybe seven days versus nine days.
At this point, and this is up to you guys on your comfort level, I mean, I'm totally fine with this calendar. I think that the committee has obviously worked very hard to do lots of different scenarios and factor in our educational needs with our delays and our conference days and our staff development, as well as our, like, legal requirements, as well as our testing requirements. So I'm kind of looking at this calendar thinking, this has been a lot of work, and they've come up with something that is the best option, that's not gonna make everybody happy, it never does. So for me, I'm very comfortable with this calendar. And I don't know if you guys are asking them to, like, go back and come up with a different plan, but, but maybe what we could ask is, you know, next year, next time around, could we make an effort to align with BOCs? Could we say that that's something that is important, that we would like to make a priority, whether it happens exactly, it may not happen exactly aligned, but could we at least try to align the spring breaks as like an effort moving forward?
And, you know, and if you, if you really feel that strongly about it, we can, we can make the two changes and do it in April, and we just don't get everything that we're looking for.
I just wonder how many parents it's gonna screw up.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I don't think we need to, first of all, we never just get, get it on the first agenda and then approve it, so it's kind of out there. So I say we let it, let it brew out there for a little bit. You know, maybe some other school districts that are in this third also will get the same pushback, and they might say, "You know what? Okay, we're gonna make the adjustment, too."
But they've already adopted, so.
We're late, I believe.
Really? We're late?
Well, I mean, they, they just adopted right after they got the dates, so. I mean, but, but again, you know, it's, you're right. I mean, it's, what we do is what's in the best interest of our kids. And I think the only compelling concern that we had, and really, we discussed that for a long time, was to make sure that we had as much, had our kids in their classroom as much as possible. That was the compelling argument, yeah. No, no, I'm sorry, except for BOCs, too.
Well, yeah. So, I mean, I mean, to me, the only, other than, if that testing argument wasn't there, I really, I would really be confused on why we're not doing it.
Honestly, the test, now, you guys are convincing me here, but the testing is three to eight. There's really no preparation.
Oh.
I mean.
Yes, there is.
No, I don't want to go there. I don't want to go there.
Well, I think that we have very nervous teachers.
But the testing isn't happening two days before. That, I mean, honestly, it's happening right now, and we're a month and a half. It's been happening. For my seventh grader, I know. And.
Right, but the people who organize this calendar are the teachers, are the people that are in the classroom.
That's why I asked you, the committee, what's the.
The teachers, the staff, Dr. Bowers, the department heads, like, the people who are in there with the kids, with the needs of the school in terms of testing. So I'm assuming that they know more than I do about the testing needs.
Well, I'm, and not just that, I mean, I'm assuming.
All right, can we, can we tape? I didn't mean to cut you off. I'm sorry.
No, no, I was not finishing my sentence. It's fine.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah. I already said what I said.
Well, I can give you both calendars. I can send it to you on Friday, and so you can see both choices. You know, and the committee, I think, I don't think anybody loved the outcome of any of this, because this was a very difficult calendar, and we've not had one that's been this difficult before. I do know two years ago, we had a very different calendar than BOCs, and I guess if that's the directive of the district, that we should be making sure we're with the BOCs' calendar, then that's something that I, I was not aware of, and I think that's something that's good that we're talking about it now, because that should go into play. And that would make a difference in how we proceeded.
I mean, that, as I said, I was always under the impression that that was, I mean, there's no written policy, but I was always under the impression that that was basically the premise of how we decide what the April break is.
And generally, that would happen, but it splintered at BOCs when these, with these calendars now. And there are, there are different paths people take.
I just want to be sure it works for the parents, that they don't get caught with their kid's home one week and then they're home the next week, and have to kind of figure it out worldwide.
Well, we did send it to the PTA, and the one question they had was about the five days and how it shifted from, I think the parents prefer the Fridays.
But it makes total sense what you just said I hadn't thought about, because usually, they're on straight nines on Fridays, so that's the problem.
Oh, right, 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 right.
So we're gonna, we're gonna table?
I think we should table.
Till next week.
We're gonna table.
To approve.
To approve. Okay. So it's in the vapors.
Sorry, before, what do we, you're gonna bring this back to the committee? What are we, tabling, just?
Well, Diana's going to send the other option.
How?
Right?
Right. And I will let the committee know that you had an interest in seeing two options. And so.
And we're also gonna see if there's anybody else that speaks up with concerns.
Yep.
So then that means we would not be approving it necessarily till March 21st. Does that mess anything up? Diana?
Not that I can think of at this point. But what the April break would look like then is, it would be Good Friday and then the following week. So, okay. I'll get to the other one.
We have one minute left in our show here before we really do need to change the tape, or else.
We are gonna have to change the tape.
Okay, we are ready. Okay, back in business. Okay, so I think we're into the information reports. They are here for review, not for approval. They are there for everyone's review. Correspondence, there's a letter from Ms. Katie Cox in regards to the, in regards to the calendar proposal, which is also there for review. Any communication from the public? Consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
We're talking about the minutes of the Board of Education meeting on February 28th. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda financial. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I just ask, do we do these every year? And can you just explain a little bit what this is? So there's four different schools here. We're paying health services for kids who are in those, in the Haldane district, and they're being tuitioned out to these other school districts? Is that what it is?
It could be that, or it's, are there some that are LEAs?
It's, Haldane students attending private schools in other districts, we have to pay for the health services being provided to those private schools. They might be parochial schools, they might be just private schools. So our students attend, for instance, Lord's. So Lord's is in the Arlington district. So Arlington is going to bill Haldane for health services that are provided, because Arlington has to provide the nurse to Lord's.
Got it.
Who take care of our children, and they bill us for them.
And this cluster of them, the four of them, is because this is just this time of year where you get the billing for it?
This time of year is when the bills come.
So we're not gonna see this continually through the year? This just happens to be, like, the one.
Usually, in this time of year, you had some maybe last time, you'll have maybe a couple more the next meeting.
Okay, got it. But it's this time of year.
It's this time of year.
And we're the LEA for Manitou. And so, if we, we provide services there, then we can, we can charge back their districts.
Got it.
Someone had a question about the date.
Yeah, I was wondering why there was one from 1516.
But I didn't send that question until the 12th, that one.
Is that a typo on the Wapengers one?
No, they, that was, it, the paperwork was misplaced.
Oh, okay.
I don't know what happened to it, but I know that one of the staff members came to me and said that they had received this invoice, and it was labeled past due. They called Wapengers, "We don't have record of receiving it." So they just sent us a duplicate, okay? It was, I don't know whose fault it was.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion, please? Any discussion? Of note is, Dr. Bowers' contract extension is here, which I can't talk about until after we approve it, but after, if the board approves it, I will share some of the details with the public. It will be public knowledge, but it's here effective through 2020. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Adam? So congratulations, Dr. Bowers.
Thank you very much.
So your contract has been extended. Congratulations to us. We get to have Dr. Bowers' services through June 30th, 2020. The contract addendum will be on the website for everyone to see, I'm assuming sometime soon. Whenever things get approved, they tend to go up on the website. You know, it's standard superintendent contract stuff, vacation days, sick days, health insurance and retirement, things like that. So that'll all be there. And we are, as a board, very happy to have Dr. Bowers with us ongoing. We're proud of her work thus far and look forward to her continued work. Okay, unfinished business. Student transportation efficiency study. So the last time we talked, we said we wanted to do a transportation study, we said we didn't like how much it cost, and can we spread out the payments? And Dr. Bowers says.
So I talked to Lou Bifardi today, who is the gentleman who sent the proposal, and he presently is on Long Island doing a transportation study. He'll be back next week. week, and he's going to stop in, and we're going to sit down and meet each other and make sure that this is the right combination. And he, we, he's very flexible as far as when then we start and the billing, and so we did talk about it. I said, I told him that we would probably want it to span over two years, but it could start in the spring and then end in early summer. So, that would allow for that to happen.
And I believe there was a question from the board about, were there multiple people...
Did we get competitive rates? Did, did we talk about that?
We didn't talk about competitive rates. What we did is, I, I approached a number of people to do, asking if they would do a study, and they all directed me to this group. And this group, actually, the last time Haldane did a study, it was done by this group. And so, this is probably the, the most well-respected group in New York State that does studies there. I mean, they're far away, they're out of Rochester. And so, but they do have people in different parts, and actually, Mr. Bifardi lives in Fishkill. So...
So, the only reason I asked was because if it was more expensive than we really had budgeted for, should we be looking into spending what we had budgeted for?
Well, we are, I, but, but if we spread out the payments, we are spending what we budgeted. That would be one of the reasons to spread out the payments.
And the other piece is, if we wanted to do, it's actually an efficiency study, and it goes through all of the different components of transportation. And when you do an efficiency study, you drive aid, and if you just do a study on, a route study, you do not. And so, the recommendation would be to go and do the more intensive study, give you a fuller, a fuller range of efficiencies within the district.
Oh, and we'll get some aid back from this, too?
Yeah. We get transportation aid back.
So, this study is, is more expensive than the last study we had, but it sounds like this is a more comprehensive study, which makes sense why it would cost a little bit more, or some, a couple thousand dollars more.
And as a district, we're looking at this, this study not just to see if we're really being as efficient as possible in terms of what are we spending, what our routes look like, but we're also seeing it as a potential, you know, if we want to investigate changing start times, we need this information. Can we do one route? What would that look like? One run. And that's important information for us in our bigger picture as well. So, it sounds like you're going to wait till you meet with him?
I'll meet with him next week, and then we'll see where, where it goes.
See where it goes, okay. There's an MOA discussing the Leadership Development Program. That's something we've talked about before, and it sounds like we have a couple of teachers who have applied to the program, have been accepted to the program, and now they would like to talk a little bit more concretely about us paying for the program and what that means.
And this, what it would be is 25% of the cost of the program over a three-year period. So, it's, it would be, as I remember, a little over 6,000? Yeah.
So, that was one of my questions in item one. It says the total cost is 26,200. Does that mean per teacher, or is that the total cost?
That's the total cost for them, and then we would be looking at 25% of that. So, we would be paying a little under, it was between 6,000 and 7,000, and they would be paying the remainder of it.
So, total for the two?
For us would be 13, 14,000.
13, 14,000.
Over three years. And, and then the, what we talked about would be also to have them provide services to the district for the compensation, and there is a 600-hour internship that they would be doing with us, and we could give them assignments to complete through the three, through the period of the 600 hours. And so, that would be directly giving back to the district.
And I see that there's this line in here about should we impact, should we fall on hardship? We might not be able to continue the support of the program. I'll be honest, I don't love the way that's worded, because I think may lead to the possibility of staffing cuts. I think that's, like, a little specific. I feel like the board should be able to say, you know, if, it's not just about cutting staff. If we're cutting something, if we are, if we are having a hard time with our budget in whatever place, whether it's staff or not staff, we shouldn't be required to, and I don't know if it's, like, at the discretion of the Board of Education, or do we need to re, I mean, are we approving it for the full three years? And if we need to change that along the way, there's some sort of process?
Right. And that item number one is also worded. I think we would need to reword that, per year, the cost for the total of the two. And we also have to think about what this means going forward, not just necessarily for two right now, for the district going forward.
Other folks want to do this.
Right.
Well, there's one cohort at a time.
Okay.
So, they begin and end, and then if there was another, the decision would be made at that point, as we still want, if we still want to do this. And this is something that the district has done in the past, and we've supported it. So...
Are there any requirements that, like, do they need to meet a certain GPA? Do they need to, are we just assuming that they're doing well?
It's a professional cohort, and if they weren't, they would be canceled, or counseled out of it, you know? So, I think that it's, you're not going to get somebody getting a C or a D, you know? I mean, that's, this is a professional group.
So, in fairness to them also, what'll happen, because I'm sure 875 a credit, does that get locked in, or, because if it's 875 a credit in 2017, it probably won't be 875 a credit in 2019.
Well, it's a combination. I think Putnam, Northern Westchester BOSEs coordinates that with Bank Street.
So, it's a locked-in rate?
It is. And, and just like when I went through my doctoral cohort, you know, you knew upfront exactly how much everything was going to cost.
So, I just, I'll reiterate, I said it last time when we, when we talked about it. I think this is a great thing. I've done a comment, something like this in, in my school with, with teachers becoming assistant principals. I think this is a great thing. I think this sends a message to the staff that we're about helping you move forward in your career, whether it's at Haldane or another school district. So, I, I think this is a great thing to do. This is really showing great, good faith to the, to the, to the teachers that we're willing to do something like this. So, this is really good.
And we, and we do need to support people that are willing to go into administration, because so few people are really willing to take the step at this point.
Stephen, I read this. Initially, I thought item number one, and I remembered we were discussing that it was such a significant amount of money. I was looking at this, that it was going to be 26,000 for two, yeah, for each. And then, so that's why, I, am I the only one who's reading that for total?
No, you, you just need to read the whole sentence. Like, it agrees to pay for 25% of the cost of the program for a total program cost of 26,200. When you read the whole sentence, it makes sense. I know what you're saying. I mean, but I think, I think technically it makes sense.
30 times 875 an hour comes to 26,250.
This is like an individual agreement.
Teachers.
Well, for, this, this would be an agreement with one teacher.
One teacher.
Their, their cost would be 26,200.
Right, so, one teacher's getting this, and they're each getting one, okay?
So, we're paying 6,500 divided by three years. So, we're paying 2,200 a year per teacher for three years.
This isn't something that's going in the back of the Haldane Faculty Association?
No.
That's what I was trying to...
No, this is a MOA of, and just one that we put together to be very clear.
And we would be dealing with it on a case-by-case basis. So, this doesn't lock us into any sort of precedent setting. After these three years, somebody else wants to apply, they can apply. We can say yes, we can say no.
And I would think, though, then the teachers involved would have to sign this, not just Andrea as the faculty.
Well, it's a, yeah, there, there will be some kind of agreement that we have with them, too. But this is different, this is just saying that, that we're agreeing to this. But if you'd like, I mean, and it's not there, and when you said that, maybe we should put in, this is not precedent-setting, and this is for this cohort, and decisions will be made as far as the next cohort at that time.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay, so we'll add precedent, we'll add that.
And it's also, I mean, we should also note that as they're getting their 30 graduate credits, along the way, they're getting raises. Steps, based on their...
Oh, yeah.
So...
So, it's not just the cost of the program, it's also...
They're also getting an increase in their salaries.
But I, I do like what Evan said about the idea of, I mean, that's what good employers do, I mean, and, and strong organizations do, is they, you grow good staff, right? I mean, you, you, well, yeah, I mean, an organization is as, is as good as its staff. And, I mean, Ba, I mean, I, I mean, Bank Street's...
Bank Street's great.
It's, it's a great school. I mean, it's, and it's very much in line of what...
What's his name?
John Chambers.
Yeah.
John Chambers.
Oh, he is, anyway.
He teaches it.
Teacher.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, it's a, it's a fabulous program.
Okay, good. So, it sounds like we're on board with just a couple of adjustments. Okay, Diana's meeting with the students tomorrow to discuss the budget. We are meeting with the students on Thursday to discuss life and times here at Haldane High School.
I won't.
You won't be here? It starts at 8:15. There will be breakfast served. I will not be there till about 8:45. Start without me. It, we'll start with, like, a discussion, and then we'll do some touring of classrooms. We should all come prepared to ask if you have any questions you want to ask, you know, anything you want, you're wondering about.
So, last year, I remember, we had a packet.
There'll be a packet.
We kind of started going off of...
Peter will be providing us with, you know, just the, like, what the packet is to describe Haldane High School, you know? And we can use that as a basis of a starting point. He has assembled a diverse group of students, and I think that it can just be a little bit free-form. You know, we can ask them questions, it'll lead to something else, they'll ask us questions, we'll get a tour of the school, we can follow up on things from last year, or not. Should be nice. Haldane Athletic Hall of Fame proposal, it is here for us to review. It is not being talked about till next board meeting, but it's here for us, you know, just to get, like, a sneak peek.
The retreat.
And the, oh, the retreat, the retreat is Thursday night, so just pull up like a sleeping bag here.
I took the day off.
The retreat is Thursday night. Thank you, Evan. Dinner will be served. All of our meals will be here at Haldane.
It's upstairs.
It's upstairs in the library. Any communication from the public? Okay, new business. Ms. Julia Famularo.
Excuse me. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the recommendations of the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education, as indicated.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion? Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The approval of the school calendar, we are going to table until next meeting. Do you need us to do anything about that, or just?
Um, I'll just mark it.
Okay. Then, if there's no communication from the public, I would like to make a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing the employment history of a particular individual. And I will tell the public, we're doing a mid-year evaluation for Dr. Bowers. May I have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.